Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning Commissioner meeting to order at 6:00, September 3rd. Can we have a termination of quorum, please?
Jim Barnes?
Here.
Michael Flick is not here at the moment. Commissioner Lynda Kennedy informed me she would be sick. Dan Lazariski?
Here.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
Amy Owens?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rob Pierce?
Present.
We have a quorum of five.
All right. Would you all please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the ethics law announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember that you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, please disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I'm also going to go ahead and read the Zoom instructions. This meeting is being held in the County Commission chambers. It's also being held via Zoom. To attend the meeting via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar using the link found on the first page of the agenda. You can also join the meeting by typing zoom.us into your computer browser, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering meeting ID 842-7265-9406. If anyone is having computer issues, you can also join the meeting via telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and press pound. For those of you wishing to provide public comment via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar on the link on the agenda and utilize the raise hand feature during any public comment period. For those of you joining us via telephone today, you can provide public comments by pressing star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the appeal procedure, please, Mr. Lloyd?
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. So please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up general public comment. Does anybody have any general public comment?
I have one speaker for general public comment, Lou Christensen. If you could please walk to the stadium and state your first and last name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Lou Christensen. I'm a resident of Silver Knolls. I've been there since 1990. Among other things, this evening, you will be considering adopting regulatory zone amendments for parcels of land in and around the Silver Knolls neighborhood. There are two requests being made, having to do with changing current zoning from LDS to MDS. And in both those cases, it would permit, at a minimum, a tripling of the dwelling units permitted on these parcels. In the case of Osage, 41 to 131, White Owl, 163 to 489. A few years ago, most of you probably remember, we were here and we, well, Silver Hills development was approved just north of this area, 1,874 dwelling units. A little further north of these pieces that I've mentioned are another 2,000-plus units with Evans Ranch and Silver Star Ranch on the books. So I'm thinking about what you're doing tonight, and there's a potential that you can set a precedent. There's, in Silver Knolls, there's numerous parcels that are eight acres or more. These parcels total about, not counting the ones being considered tonight, another 550 acres. Right now, there's one dwelling unit per acre on those parcels. What you do tonight may set a precedent for those parcels to triple the amount of acres that could go on them. We're talking about a lot of, potentially, a lot of dwelling units in and around the Silver Knolls community. It kind of feels like there in Silver Knolls, we're at ground zero for way more of the development than I think anybody, certainly out there, think is appropriate. So I would just ask you to keep in mind that, sure, you know, people need to be able to develop their land, need houses for new residents and such, but we need to consider the desires and the needs of the existing residents and, you know, what our contribution to developing the community should be. And we shouldn't be overly burdened, which I think in this case, it sounds like we certainly could be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more in chambers, but I do have one hand raised on Zoom. Isis Rose, 26. Please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Yes, Keith DeForest, and I live in Gerlach and Empire. And I'm calling about the one they were talking about with the APN 0711211, and they're trying to change the zoning. And they're also trying to change the high desert amendment, which is, helps protect rural areas like ours. So I have 24 signatures on this parcel that would like to see it stay rural residential. And I also have a list of why, why they think it should. So I would mail them or send them to you. One is, we have very little residential lots or housing in Gerlach and Empire. We need more. The highway is unsafe for traffic, and even this store has had problems for years with that. They've already graded the lot and started putting commercial vehicles on it. And the high desert plan was put into effect to help protect rural areas and so that we can build and afford to build and grow. And we have a hard time connecting to the Washoe County website. It keeps going in and out to get information. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further public comment online or in chambers.
All right. With that, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it on to item number six, approval of the December 3rd agenda. I don't have any changes. Anybody have any other changes?
Commissioner Lazariski moved to approve as written.
We have a second.
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the agenda for today, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, say no. Nay? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number seven, approval of September 3rd draft minutes. Does everybody get a chance to look at it? Do we have any changes that we need to make, or can I get a motion to accept as written?
Commissioner Lazariski, I move that we accept the September 3rd draft minutes as written.
I need a second.
Commissioner O'Barons, I second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight. It's a public hearing. This one is for a master plan amendment, case number WMPA 24-0004, regulatory zone amendment, case number WARZA 24-0006 for Empire. Mr. Lloyd, would you please announce?
Yeah, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan High Desert Master Plan Land Use Map to change the Master Plan Land Use designation on an 11.55-acre parcel from suburban residential to commercial. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Any adoption by the Planning Commission is subject to approval by the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. And number two, to, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, recommend adoption of an amendment to the High Desert Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone for an 11.55-acre parcel from low-density suburban to general commercial. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Julie Olander.
All right, Julie, floor yours.
Good evening, Julie Olander, for the record. So as Mr. Lloyd said, this is a master plan amendment to change land use from suburban residential to commercial and to change the regulatory zoning from low-density suburban to general commercial. This parcel is, you can see on the right, is located out on your way to Gerlach, and then on the left, there's a closer view of the parcel itself. And here's the master plan request. On the left, you have the subject parcel highlighted, and it's light pink. That's the suburban residential. And then on the right, it's highlighted as if, with the proposed change, and it's red, commercial. This is wrong. Oops, I got the wrong slide up there because this is RZA. I apologize. But however, this is pretty much what's going to happen to change here. That's my error. I put it in, I put the same slide in twice, if you can see. Moving on. Currently, the property is being used under a temporary use permit that was obtained two years ago to rent bikes for Burning Man. There are some cargo containers and Conex boxes on the site that are used for the bike rental operation. The property owner has cleaned up the site significantly. However, there are still a few abandoned items on the site, including some vehicles, and that's just a challenge, finding ownership of vehicles and then the disposal requirements. Currently, there aren't, there's no infrastructure on the site, power, water, or sewer. The applicant has indicated that as, as the infrastructure is necessary, it will be established on the site. And further contends that commercial development on the parcel will attract new investments that will enhance the community's economic vitality and bring resources to provide the required utilities and infrastructure. The applicant has obtained a will-serv letter from Nevada Energy, and the applicant has also been made aware that they will need to receive a commercial onsite sewage disposal system from the Division of Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, and that is one of the conditions from Northern Nevada Public Health. Additionally, the applicant will have to obtain commercial water rights, and there is also a condition from Washoe County Engineering outlining the requirements on that. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Bruno's Country Club. There were 10 attendees. They were concerned about the maintenance of the site, the junk that accumulated on the site. They also asked about the timing of the, of the meeting, that it was during the Burning Man event. They also were concerned, as a, as a earlier public comment was made, about taking away residential zoning and the need for housing out there. And then they're also asked just how the property was going to be developed. Staff, I did receive one phone call in opposition. It was the same gentleman that spoke earlier, didn't want to have the residential zoning removed. And then we received some emails also, primarily from that one gentleman, and you have received, those are forwarded to you, I believe, this morning. Thirty-seven properties were noticed 2,2700 feet from the site, and then a legal notice was put in the Reno Gazette Journal. Various agencies have reviewed the application, and that, you can find it, Exhibit C. Staff can make all the findings as explained in the staff report, and possible motions are found in your staff report. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant's representative is here, too.
All right. If the applicant would like to make a presentation, you're welcome to.
Good evening, Anne Marie Lane, for the record. I'll wait while the presentation gets pulled up.
Can we reset the timer, please? Thank you.
Today, I will introduce the applicant, provide project background, outline the request, and address key insights and concerns with the project. Again, my name is Anne Marie Lane with Juniper and Sage Consulting. With me today, I have the applicant, Mr. Joe Rutzke. Joe is a longtime Nevada resident, UNR graduate, 12-year military veteran with three oversea tours, and a board member of Big Brother, Big Sisters of Northern Nevada. The 11.55-acre subject site is situated five miles south of Gerlach, Nevada, in the Black Rock Desert across from the Empire Mining Facility on State Route 447. That's approximately 90 miles north of Sparks. The subject site is a vacant lot currently devoid of any permanent structures. Before the applicant acquired the property in May of 2023, the subject site was being used as an unpermitted outdoor storage facility, as noted in the figure on the screen. Since taking ownership, the applicant has invested approximately $20,000 in labor, gas, and landfill disposal fees to clean up the site. This investment has facilitated the removal of significant debris, including abandoned trailers, unusable equipment, and other waste materials. As you can see from Figure 2, these efforts have substantially improved the condition of the property. Currently, the applicant is utilizing 11 storage containers and two Conex units to support seasonal bike rental operations with a temporary use permit. On the northeast section of the property, there are still a few remaining abandoned items, including a derelict bus that the property owner is actively working to remove. The applicant's investment in site cleanup demonstrates a strong commitment to regulatory compliance and property revitalization, reflecting good faith efforts to enhance the area. To support long-term operations of the seasonal bike rental operation, the property owner has submitted a master plan amendment and regulatory zone change request. This aims to eliminate the need for temporary use permits and align the property's use with its commercial potential, enhancing efficiency and contributing to the local economy. The applicant has no other development plans at this time. The applicant is requesting a master plan amendment from suburban residential to commercial and a regulatory zone amendment from low-density suburban to general commercial zoning designation. The request must align with the Washoe County Master Plan by ensuring that the proposed zoning change supports the community's long-term goals and land use policies outlined in the master plan. And the request must also conform to the regional plan by aligning with broader regional goals and policies, ensuring that the proposed master plan amendment supports coordinated development across multiple jurisdictions. The subject site has a current master plan designation of suburban residential. The request for a commercial master plan designation is consistent with the master plan designations west and south of the subject site. The subject is currently zoned low-density suburban. The request to amend the regulatory zone to general commercial is consistent with the regulatory zones west and south of the subject site. The low-density suburban regulatory zone is intended to create and preserve areas where single-family detached homes on one-acre lots are predominant. The general commercial regulatory zone is intended to create and preserve areas that provide the wholesale of goods and retail and personal services. Primary uses include wholesale and retail sales, shopping centers, specialty shops, personal services and auto bill services. Other uses include offices, restaurants, theaters, and other compatible activities. Examples of uses that would require a special use permit in the general commercial zoning district include construction, sales, and services, data centers, major utility services, and major public facilities. Before submitting the application, the applicant attended a pre-application meeting with the county on August 6. The county advised reaching out to the Gerlach General Improvement District for comments and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for a preliminary regional plan conformity review. The Gerlach GID, located five miles north of the subject site, provides water, disposal, and sewer services to Gerlach residents. As noted by the Gerlach Public Works Supervisor, the GID does not serve the subject parcel and has no position on projects outside its district. Following the meeting with the Gerlach GID, the applicant consulted with TMRPA, who conducted a preliminary regional plan conformance review. As noted in the Planning Commission's staff report on page 26, TMRPA identified no conformity issues at this time. In compliance with NRS 278.210 and Washoe County Presuminal requirements, neighborhood meeting notifications were sent to 43 neighboring property owners. A neighborhood meeting was held on August 27th, 2024, at Bruno's Country Club in Gerlach, Nevada, to inform residents about the proposed request and gather community input. One concern raised during the public engagement process was the timing of the neighborhood meeting, which coincided with the Burning Man Festival. The scheduling was necessitated by Washoe County's policy of accepting master plan applications only three times per year. Postponing the meeting would have resulted in missing the September summing deadline. It was communicated to the public that each master plan amendment application undergoes a thorough review process, including four public hearings, with opportunity for public input. To accommodate those unable to attend the neighborhood meeting, the applicant's representative offered individual meetings via email and next door. However, no requests were received as of the application's summing date. Despite concerns about the meeting's timing, 23% of the noticed property owners attended, which is a higher-than-average turnout for neighborhood meetings. Public concerns were also raised about the lack of project-specific details on the request. The applicant's representative clarified that a zone change grants a permanent change to the property's zoning designation, independent of future development plans. Unlike, unlike site-specific proposals, a zone change provides a broad framework for all permitted uses under the new designation, ensuring long-term compatibility regardless of future development changes. Public concerns also address the potential for the property to develop a neglected or unkept appearance marked by disarray and litter. There was a general consensus that the increased traffic from tourism has led to an unsightly environment in the area due to the accumulation of discarded and unused items, adversely affecting the community's aesthetic appeal and overall quality of life. The applicant's representative explained that any future proposal development on the subject site would be subject to screening requirements identified in Washoe County Development Code under civic and commercial use types. In addition, Washoe County has enforcement procedures to handle public nuisances, which include the presence of debris, litter, garbage, rubble, abandoned or junk vehicles, or junk appliances. A few residents also expressed concern about the reduction in residential land available in the area. To assess the potential impact of the proposed zone request on the availability of residentially-zoned land in the independent communities of Gerlach and Empire, the applicant included an acreage analysis in the Application Summital Packet. The analysis revealed a total of 96.3 acres of residentially-zoned land within the Empire and Gerlach communities. According to the 2020 census, the total population of Gerlach and Empire was 177 residents. At its peak in the 1950s, the population exceeded 1,000 residents. Today, it is estimated that the number of year-round residents has declined to approximately 100 residents. The applicant's rezone request would result in a reduction of residentially-zoned property in the area by 11.98%. This reduction translates to only 11 potential residential dwelling units, which is minimal given the current demographic trends. Not only has the region experienced a significant decline in population, emphasizing a reduced demand for residential properties, but the local economy is increasingly shifting towards tourism. This transition necessitates a more robust commercial infrastructure to support visitors and enhance economic opportunities. By rezoning this parcel to general commercial, the applicant hopes to better align land use with the evolving economic landscape, fostering growth in businesses that can invigorate the community. The applicant has obtained two letters of support, including one from the only residential property adjacent to the, to the subject site, which is just south of the subject site. Although a petition was submitted in opposition of the request, it was organized by the owner of the commercial properties west of the subject site. And that was the gentleman that spoke earlier today. Which, based on multiple public records requests, is operating an illegal outdoor storage business without an approved county or state business license, or an approved special use permit, which is required for outdoor storage use in the general commercial zoning district. The operation of this illegal outdoor storage business has directly contributed to the unsightly appearance that the community has repeatedly voiced concern over. According to the Nevada Division of Tourism, the percentage of visitors who traveled to Northern Nevada for the primary purpose of outdoor recreation grew from 3.8% in 2015 to 8% in 2019. The Burning Man event occurs annually in late August to September on the Black Rock Desert. This event is permitted under a BLM Special Recreation Permit, and the event is the largest special recreation permit issued by the BLM nationwide. Other activities that happen in the vicinity include amateur and experimental rocket launching events, four-wheel-drive chores, land speed trials, land sailing, weddings, guided and outfitted camping and horseback trips, and commercial filming and photography. This growth in outdoor recreation demand highlights the importance of tourism for local economies in Northern Nevada. Not only has the region experienced a significant decline in population, emphasizing a reduced demand for residential properties, but the local economy is increasingly shifting towards tourism. The subject parcel is located within the High Desert Master Plan, which states that there is opportunity to support the development of new commercial services within Gerlach and Empire. Additionally, the plan outlines the current state of commercial services as primarily vacant and highlights the community's desire to enhance future conditions. The plan also states that land use practices and regulations should accommodate the needs of rural communities and changing trends regarding businesses. This request not only accommodates existing rural needs, but also anticipates future growth and opportunities, ensuring that land use practices remain responsive to the dynamic landscape of rural economies. The plan also encourages the support of visual improvements to enhance community gateways. The applicant's efforts to improve the site by removing junk and debris directly support the policy of enhancing community gateways. By rezoning the property to general commercial, the owner is taking a proactive step to mitigate the negative impacts associated with vacant and poorly maintained land. Lastly, the plan encourages engagement of the residents of the community to ensure development is consistent with the community's unique needs. By enhancing the site's condition, the owner not only demonstrates commitment to improving the property, but also creates a more attractive environment for future commercial services. The applicant is committed to address the community's concern about property blight and hopes these efforts will encourage investment and growth. In summary, approval of this request aligns with the community's vision for visual improvements and increased commercial services, fostering a vibrant and well-maintained gateway that reflects the area's character and encourages economic activity. Ultimately, the rezone request is a crucial step in establishing standards that prioritize community aesthetics and enhance overall quality of the area. As evidenced throughout this presentation, the requested amendments are consistent with the governing approval. Therefore, and on behalf of the applicant, we are respectfully requesting Washoe County Planning Commission to recommend approval of this request. At this time, I would like to thank Washoe County Planning Staff, Mrs. Julie Olander, for her professionalism and excellent communication throughout the processing of this application. Her dedication and thorough review of requests has made this process much smoother, and it is truly appreciated. I'd also like to thank the Planning Commission for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment on this matter. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
I have several hands raised online, but no public comment in chambers. So, starting with a phone caller with the last four digits of 4353, please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hello? Yes. So, my comment is actually not on this matter, but on the previous matter that was voted upon. And the matter was closed so quickly that I didn't have a chance to...
What matter did you want to speak on, sir?
The matter of the development off of Red Rock.
Okay, you will have a chance. We will be discussing that. That's item 8C. So, we will be calling for public comment at that time. You can say your piece then, if you'd like.
Oh, so that vote was not...
You started with a general public comment, and no more hands were raised, but you will have a chance to speak again once we discuss that particular item, which is 8C, okay?
Thank you.
I have Keith DeForest once again. Keith, please go ahead and... Where'd you go, Keith? Please go ahead and unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
My name's Keith DeForest, and for the record, I acquired the property back in March after my brother passed away, so I'm trying to buy it for my nephews. So, I have never had a rental storage unit on that property. However, there is an illegal storage facility there called Empire Storage and Rental that we did not know was doing that, and I'm in the process of trying to figure out how to evict them. But if you go online under Empire Storage and Rentals, they've put a business on my lot and started a rental company for Burning Man without our permission, and we did not know that until I bought the property in March. So, just for the record on that, and they've been trying to manipulate the locals and the lots in Gerlach to control. So, I'm trying to fight for my business and my family. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Gerlach Community Center. Please go ahead and unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thanks. This is Elizabeth Gambrell. I live in Gerlach, Nevada, and I'm familiar with all three of these businesses. And what I'd like to talk about is the fact that, yes, we do need housing in Gerlach, as most of the Planning Commission knows, we talk about this all the time, but this is not in Gerlach. This is on Empire at 447, where there is currently no electric available. If they have to go for water, they're going to drill a well, which could possibly impact the one and only residence that is down there, because they're probably going to draw on the same water source. And so far, what Mr. Rutzke's done with that property has been phenomenal. I have looked at it for 10 years and found it to be very, very junky, and he has done a lot of work to clean that up and make it better. It is a business, and he does spend three to four months a year out here, working on the land and working with the business, which actually brings money to Gerlach, because they use our restaurants, they use our hotel, they buy at the store. And we do need to grow commercially as well as residentially, but there is no possibility of a residence down there unless they can get... He's got the thing from Nevada Energy, that is going to cost beaucoup bucks. The closest house, which is the next-door house, actually gets their energy from Empire Mining, and that was a deal that was struck over 30 years ago. I don't know how that could be facilitated today. With regards to sewage, it's not a very high-water table over there, so a septic tank would not be unfeasible, but for the limited amount of time they use there, I know there's some exemptions available. If they could have a porta potty system, or if you guys could work out something with that, because it's not going to be a residence. So, I'm just looking at some possibilities for Mr. Rutzke. I'm all for it. It created a new business, it cleaned up the neighborhood, and they are absolutely wonderful neighbors. Thank you very much.
I have no further public comment in chambers, nor hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have our questions? Do we have any discussion or any questions for anybody?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I would just like to note that, as much as we'd love to wade into every single thing, of course, at the Planning Commission, we are not code enforcement, and so allegations of who's doing what according to the rules aren't our purview, but it is appreciated to see an applicant bring a property into compliance and try to move forward with proper permitting and zoning.
Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions or anything? If we don't, then I'll accept a motion. We got a motion.
Commissioner Lazarewski, as to the master plan amendment, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission adopt the resolution contained in Attachment A of this staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 24-0004. Having made at least three of the five required findings set forth in Washoe County Code Section 110.820.15D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in WMPA 24-004 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission.
This is Rob. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, say nay. All right, that motion passes. We'll move on to regulatory zone amendment motion.
Sure. Happy to make that motion. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as Attachment B, recommending adoption of the Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 24-0006. Having made all the findings set forth in Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 24-0006 as set forth in the staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
All right. Once again, I'll second that. So, we have a motion and a second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes both of them unanimously. That moves us on to item 7B, which is a tentative subdivision map, WTM 24-002 Donovan Ranch Estates. Mr. Lloyd, please announce.
For hearing discussion and possible action to approve a tentative subdivision map for a proposed common open space development on four parcels totaling 144.83 acres, with current low-density suburban zoning that allows one dwelling unit per acre for a maximum of 144 dwelling units and 70.8 acres of open space, with lots ranging in size from 14,500 square feet to five acres, and for major grading of 756,594 cubic yards of excavation and 715,797 cubic yards of fill material, with 40,797 cubic yards of that fill material being imported. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Courtney Wyke.
Courtney, for yours.
Okay. Good evening, Courtney Wyke, Senior Planner. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. The item before you is WTM 24-002 for Donovan Ranch Estates tentative map. So, the specific request is for a tentative subdivision map for a proposed common open space development. The project encompasses four parcels totaling 144.83 acres and has a regulatory zone of low-density suburban, which allows for one dwelling unit per acre for a maximum of 144 dwelling units. The proposal before you is for 144 dwelling units with 70.8 acres of open space. Lots would range in size from 14,500 square feet to five acres. Tentative maps also allow for major grading, and the request before you is a grading for roughly 750,000 cubic yards of excavated material and 715,000 cubic yards of fill material, with approximately 40,000 cubic yards of that fill material imported. The site is located east of Pyramid Highway at the end of Horizon View Avenue, immediately east of the Shadow Ridge subdivision. Currently, the project site includes an aggregate mining operation known as the Donovan Pit, a commercial landscape materials yard, and a composting operation. The five-acre parcel located at the southeast corner of the project area is developed with a single-family dwelling. The owner wishes to discontinue the aggregate mining operation and develop the site with a residential development in accordance with the low-density suburban regulatory zoning. Above is the proposed tentative map. As discussed, the zoning allows for a maximum density of 144 dwelling units. The proposal is for a common open space subdivision per Article 408, which allows for variation of lot size, including density transfer subdivisions, in order to preserve or provide open space, protect natural and scenic resources, achieve a more efficient use of land, minimize road building, and encourage a sense of community. There will... The proposal would have 144 residential lots proposed on 64.42 acres, with 70.88 acres to remain in common open space. Since the request is for a common open space subdivision, the applicant is also proposing smaller lot sizes than the minimum 35,000 square feet, otherwise that would be required within the low-density suburban regulatory zone. The smaller lot sizes allow for the open space and community amenities, and the applicant is proposing an average lot size of 19,400 square feet. The applicant is also proposing special setbacks of 20 feet from the garages and 15 feet from the living space, as in outside of the garage, to the front property line, 15 feet from the rear lot line, and five feet from the sides. The proposed subdivision is located within the Spanish Springs planning area. The developer has designated approximately 70.88 acres as a common open space, which is proposed to contain the required onsite drainage retention facilities, a park and pocket park, and a network of pedestrian facilities, including a connection to the Sugarloaf Peak Trail. The applicant has proposed landscaping along internal streets with a minimum of one tree every 50 feet along the streets. The total area for the parks to be landscaped is approximately 7.2 acres. Park amenities may include things such as barbecues, benches, fitness stations, playfields, as well as various walking paths. Final compliance with the proposed landscaping plans and conditions will be assessed at the final map stage. The project also proposes to relocate an existing public parking area from a parcel owned by the Sugarloaf Peak Landscape Maintenance Association to the common space area, open space area, on the subject site, to access both the proposed park amenities and serve as a trailhead to access the adjacent trails. The park proposes 24 public parking spaces with two handicapped accessible spaces. The Washoe County Regional Parks and Open Space Parks Planner reviewed the application and provided applicable conditions of approval. A pedestrian trail is proposed along the outer edges of the eastern portion of the subdivision, with new connections to the existing El Caballo... I knew I was going to do this. El Caballo Trail and the Sugarloaf Peak Trail to the south and east of the site shown in blue above. Two trail access points are proposed along what is referred to as Street B on the map. Additional trails and access points are proposed to extend to each of the parks. In addition to the trails, conditions of approval require a 15-foot public utility easement adjacent to all public rights-of-way for sidewalks, traffic control signage, and snow storage along both sides of all internal streets. As we previously discussed, the applicant is also requesting major grading. I won't go into... Repeat those numbers again. There would be one infiltration basin proposed in the southeast corner of the site. The sides of the basin will consist of three-to-one slope stabilized by riprap in accordance with Section 110.438.31 grading standards. Conditions of approval have been included to address all of the proposed grading. Get into the facilities for sewer and water. The application indicates that the water will be provided by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority and that sewer service will be provided by Washoe County. Sewer will be conveyed to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, which is owned and operated by the City of Sparks. The Engineering Division has recommended appropriate conditions regarding sewer infrastructure and has indicated no concerns. Water service will be provided by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. A will-serv letter from Tomma will be required before the approval of a final map. Valid water and sewers will-serv letters will be required prior to approval of the final map proposed by this tentative map. In your packet, there was a comment letter from INUP, Northern Department of Environmental Protection, recommending denial with respect to water pollution and sewage disposal. This is actually a standard practice from INUP for tentative map memos, and will be resolved with a notice of intent to serve. A final will-serv is conditioned on a payment of connection fees and will be required prior to final map approval. If you have questions on this, we can ask our Engineering Division once we open it up for questions and answers. The project is anticipated to generate approximately 101 a.m. and 135 p.m. peak hour trips to the external roadway network onto Pyramid Highway. Under current and possible future conditions, the Pyramid Highway-Ingenuity Avenue and Horizon View Avenue intersection is anticipated to operate at poor levels of service during both the a.m. and peak hours with or without the proposed project. The traffic impact study projected all anticipated travel to and from Pyramid Highway via Horizon View Avenue. Emergency access would be provided via the Donovan Pit Hall Road, which currently serves the existing Donovan Pit. The traffic study also states it is anticipated that a traffic signal will be required or the traffic signal need will be met with the 51st dwelling unit of the proposed project. Washoe County Engineering has included a condition requiring the applicant to design, obtain all necessary permits, and install a traffic signal at the intersection of Pyramid Way and Horizon View Avenue prior to issuance of the 50th Certificate of Occupancy within the development. Primary access is proposed using an extension of Horizon View Avenue at the intersection with Rustic View Avenue, as well as an extension of Hacienda Ridgeway. It is anticipated that Horizon View Avenue will carry a majority of the project... of the traffic to the project area. Horizon View Avenue is designed as a collector street, meaning a moderate-capacity road, which is intended... which is intended to move traffic from local streets to arterial roads. Um, you'll notice the width of the right-of-way, the landscape buffer along both sides of the street, and that no residences take direct access from Horizon Avenue. Washoe County Engineering Division's conditions of approval require that Horizon Avenue and Rustic View Avenue to be a two-way stop-control intersection with Horizon View Avenue as the through-street. Prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, stop signs are required to be installed on Rustic View and approved, traffic calming measures will be constructed along Horizon View Avenue between the intersections of Pyramid Way and Rustic View. The traffic calming measures may include speed cushions, chicanes, and chokers constructed to Washoe County standards as approved by the county engineer. Conditions of approval require a dedication of right-of-way and construction of full-width roadway improvements for the extension of Horizon View Avenue. The Horizon View Avenue extension requires access through two Sugarloaf Peak Landscape Maintenance Association-owned parcels highlighted above. On the right demonstrates the location, shape, and size of the existing easements, authorizing improvements and access to the project site. Article four oh eight restricts the inclusion of areas devoted to public or private vehicular streets and designated common open space areas. Therefore, following construction of the proposed roadways into the new Donovan Ranch development, the roadways will be required to be dedicated to Washoe County and removed from the designated common areas. A detailed historical timeline of the legally-recorded access to the subject site was included in the staff report. For the sake of time, I will not be going through in detail here, but staff will be available to answer any questions as necessary. Um, all tentative map applications are required to have a neighborhood meeting prior to application submission. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Notices were mailed to two hundred and twenty-nine property owners within, uh, seven hundred and fifty feet of the subject parcel. Public comments, uh, related to the map predominantly centered around traffic, specifically onto Pyramid Highway and the adjacent neighborhood streets, such as Horizon View Avenue and Hacienda Ridge. The applicant stated, uh, that the neighborhood or the sign-on sheet was possibly, uh, taken by accident and so we don't have an accurate number of how many attendees were, uh, at that meeting. Um, for tonight's meeting, public noticing was sent to two hundred and thirty-three property owners within three hun- uh, five hundred feet. Uh, thirty-three public comments were received in response to the notice of, uh, the application. Many comments asserted the, um, or comments generally reiterated those comments heard at the neighborhood meeting. Many comments, um, in addition asserted the Shadow Ridge Landscape Maintenance Association violated their C C N Rs by granting easements within the, uh, L M A for short, commonly-owned property. It's important to note that C C N Rs are private agreements and Washoe County is not a party to these agreements. Local governments have no authority to enforce private restrictive covenants, uh, such as C C N Rs, because doing so would be an improper delegation of the local government's police power to private individuals. Therefore, it is not appropriate for the county to weigh in or insert itself into disputes regarding the interpretation or enforcement of a homeowner's associations. Uh, public comment continues, sorry. Um, included in your packet, uh, along with the public comments was a petition with over four hundred signatures, um, and citing opposition to the proposed map specifically for violating N R S two-seven-eight A point zero four-zero, open space defined in Washoe County Development Code one-ten-point-four-zero-eight-point-four-five, common open space, um, shall not include streets devoted to public or private use. Shadow Ridge, uh, the Shadow Ridge subdivision is not a planned unit, uh, development, the existing, I should say, Shadow Ridge subdivision is not a planned unit development within the meaning of N R S Chapter two-seven-eight A. Um, and it included in your packet as Exhibit I, um, is a memo from, uh, Mr. Chad Geisinger, Geesinger, uh, specific plan history memo for a detailed, um, and to refer to that for a detailed response in history on, um, the P U D and the, um, relevance of this section in N R S. Um, and as I mentioned previously, we did, uh, staff did provide also a very detailed historical timeline of the legally-recorded access to the subject site and can answer questions as necessary. With that, uh, staff does believe all ten findings, um, can be made for the, the proposed tentative map and have provided rationale within each of the, the pertinent findings in the staff report. And I have provided a possible motion for your consideration. With that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Does the applicant wish to make the presentation?
And the applicant, we do have an applicant and they are prepared for a presentation.
Floor's yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. John Krompottick, I'm with K L S Planning. Have the full team here this evening, uh, Josh Hicks. He's an attorney with McDonald Carano. He's done a lot of analysis on the issue that was brought up by many citizens related to the L M A access. And I would just turn that over to him if it comes up, uh, with any interest. And Scott Christie, our civil engineer, is with us and also the traffic engineer Lauren Chilton. I'll buzz through these slides quickly. Lot of it, as you know, is redundant to, uh, what, uh, Ms. Waike presented. That summary information, she summarized it perfectly.
John.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll have to do it badly for you just because the PowerPoint, we couldn't get it to work. So we have a PDF and we could just click it for you. Just tell us the next slide.
Can I give you the, the, uh, flash drive?
I can't. He's a flash drive according to our security measures. Sorry, or I would.
No worries. Thank you. Next. Uh, that's just the notice that was, um, for our neighborhood meeting on, uh, August twelfth. And then there's the map that was provided by staff, two hundred and twenty-eight notices. The subject site relative to, uh, Shadow Ridge subdivision and everything around it, Harris Ranch is, you know, under construction by Toll Brothers of the North. Uh, signature, uh, industrial property, Haco to the west across the Pyramid Highway and, um, other residential that's battered through there. Next. Here's something that's, uh, important for all of us in this process to understand. Uh, I've learned a lot about the Donovan family. They've owned the property for sixty-some-odd years, I understand. They originally did this master plan, you can see in kind of the purplish, and then the lighter blue is the subject phase. But going back about twenty years ago when they started this process, the master plan included all of that area. And it was entitled by a home builder, eventually named and sold off and constructed as Shadow Ridge for three hundred and ninety lots. The phases one through nine that, uh, we all know about that's shown on the map. Primary access to that subdivision is Horizon View. Uh, staff touched on it. I have my own, um, comments on the programming of Horizon View as it relates to future intent with a collector's street that's not been, houses fronting the street, only intersecting streets, no driveways, any of that. That was all programmed over twenty years for the eventual phase of which we're discussing tonight, the hundred and forty-three lots, hundred and forty-four in total, for Donovan Ranch Estates. Also noted on there, we've accepted all the conditions, uh, approval as presented in the staff report and, um, the future traffic light at the intersection of Horizon View and the Pyramid Highway, uh, that would be, uh, triggered, uh, with this project. Could you go back, uh, the other slide? Thank you. Actually, one, one, uh, one more. So the, the purple there is to show the three hundred and ninety lots and then they did a common open space development. And you can see that portion of common open space is the Sugarloaf Peak area and the trails that went through it to the south of the subject site. Next. That shows it in a little different perspective, but we get the idea. Next. Common open space development important here. Staff did a fine job in analyzing that. I'm not gonna go into the purpose statement, but really it's about the merits of what's being proposed and has it satisfies the purpose and all that goes with common open space development. But basically, you see the band of lots and then the open space parks. One is a, 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 um, pocket park. The other one is more of a traditional public park with a ring around it that shows, um, pedestrian trail and then a network of trails that are external I'll get to. And then the passive open space area in the park and detention area. So in terms of meeting the intent of the common open space development, it's either are no development constraints on natural resources related to this site. It's a more efficient use of land with a condensed development footprint. We talked about the seventy acres that is in open space. Provides a community amenity with the park, the pocket park, and the trails. And then I just note that there's forty-nine percent of the site in open space. Next. There you can see in the context of everything that's going on, it shows a good, uh, idea of how the circulation works at Horizon View of Hacienda Ridge and, um, and then the emergency access up to the Donovan Pit Access Road. Next. Horizon View, as touched on by staff, but you can see the obvious programming of that street as a collector's street that has capacity for thousands of vehicle trips per day. There's no interference with driveways and, uh, only the intersecting streets. So, um, similar image to what staff prepared, but, uh, that was done way back in time. This is the landscape plan and trail plan. What we're showing here and, um, the, the little image that's pasted to the lower right is from the Truckee Meadows Trail Guide. And, you know, that was done many years ago and you can kind of see the general idea of the dotted line where it goes to the west from, uh, the existing subdivision down below the site and then up into Sugarloaf Peak. All of that is, remains intact and honored with the subject plan as you see it. So we have on our plan, the dashed red line at the bottom and then it jets up to the north over to Sugarloaf Peak. In addition to, uh, the wraparound, the project, you see those two studs in red from the, uh, between a couple of lots at several areas and then on the exterior of the footprint of the development area. And then also the one that goes up to the primary access point connecting between the south and the north. In addition to the new parking area that's adjacent to the, uh, the park there. Twenty-four spaces that replace the six spaces that are there today. And I just wanted to show that for reference. That is the Sugarloaf Trails Plan that was, uh, adopted years ago. We have implemented that into the plan as I noted on the prior slide. A couple of things that are important to, um, I'd like to touch on the findings here. I typically don't do that, but I think they're so important. And, uh, some of the agency letters, uh, that have come about in this process. There's a conclusion statement on, uh, the traffic. Basically, it shows that with the traffic study, uh, and the N dot review and staff review at Washoe County, um, the intersection at Pyramid Highway will improve with the traffic light when it's implemented. Uh, next. Truckee Meadows Water, there's talk about water, uh, many of the citizen comments, which we respect. But notice this is acknowledgement of water service to the site from Truckee Meadows Water. Next. Christie Corporation, they have expertise in doing the hydrology, the, the, um, and, and the wastewater calculations. And I think it's cut off, but basically that shows that there is sufficient capacity. In the staff analysis, you would see the same, uh, conclusion. Next. I'm gonna go through these findings quickly. There's the staff, uh, as it's presented in the staff report. Plan consistency, I'm gonna echo some of the staff and then just reinforce it. Ten tentative map findings. Number one is plan consistency. It meets the goals policies of the envisioned twenty forty, new master plan that we adopted, what, less than, uh, two years ago and is in the Spanish Springs planning area. In terms of finding two, design and improvement. The design is consistent with the master plan incorporates many requirements of the Spanish Springs area plan. The subdivision streets are designed that meet Article four thirty-six. Staff said this. That's been fundamental in the analysis at many levels. Article four thirty-six is street design standards of the Washoe County Development Code, satisfied as it's presented this evening. Finding D, type of development. The site is physically suitable for the proposed development. There are no constraints in the area and the site is generally flat. It's flat in the development footprint. Obviously, the seventy acres of open space is a bit more constrained, which is where we, uh, stayed out of development area. Finding D, availability of services. Washoe County Engineer, uh, Engineering recommended conditions of approval, of which we accept, to ensure appropriate infrastructure on the site. Wastewater treatment capacity is available and adequate and will be provided by Washoe County. Finding five, fish or wildlife. N D O received a request to review the application. They, they did not respond with any comments or concerns. Public health is finding F. There are sufficient facilities and capacity for wastewater generated by the development. Appropriate air quality permitting and mitigation will occur at the time of grading and construction of the subdivision. Finding G, easements. That the design, excuse me, the development has considered all easements and found none in conflict with the easements for utility purposes or for public access. The finding on access, which is H. The design provides access to surrounding lands and provides appropriate secondary access for emergency vehicles. Horizon View and Hacienda Ridge will be extended through Shadow Ridge respectively. Trails on the south and east property boundaries will provide public access to surrounding lands as appropriate. Item, excuse me, finding I, dedications. Roadways will be dedicated to Washoe County. We have designed them to the standards. Important point to emphasize, um, for Article four thirty-six. And the lands will be improved such that they are built to county standards. And finally, there is a finding on energy. That one is a little bit more open-ended. We actually get into, you guys have heard this many times and we all know it as consumers of houses these days. Energy efficiency is a thing and housing product now. It gets better over time. The energy code is more aggressive. And so, of course, we would meet that finding, um, but it's really more related to housing product than it is the land planning effort. So I would, uh, I think I'll leave it at that. We have talked to, um, the fire officials about fire access. We're confident that we meet their, uh, calculation for remoteness. That's an I F C requirement. And, uh, certainly would have to meet the requirements for fire access. And, uh, so I'll leave it at that and, uh, any questions that you might have, myself or the team would be here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. This time we'd like to open a public comment on this matter. Do you have any public comment?
In chambers, we have Damon Booth, followed by Ken Konopelik. Please state your first last name for the record.
Good evening, Damon Booth with High West Law on behalf of Shadow Ridge Coalition. Shadow Ridge Coalition was formed by a group of residents who are here this evening, uh, some of which will be speaking for public comment. On the twenty-seventh of last month, a letter was submitted that I hope will be taken into consideration primarily focusing on the access, the concerns with the current plan, uh, with the access being through Horizon View Avenue, as well as the use of Hacienda Ridge Way. Uh, this is clearly an issue related to the ingress egress and there's also alternatives, uh, some of which were provided by Washoe County this evening and the applicant indicating that Donovan Pit Road has historically been used, continues to be used and has, um, has not undergone any development currently, but can be updated, uh, to be able to handle the traffic flow from the anticipated Donovan Estates. In addition, if tonight's In addition, if tonight's plan, the tentative plan is passed, my understanding and my belief is that the county will in fact be in violation of their own codes associated with section 110, 43230, 110, 43635, 110, 43610. Separate and aside, there are the CCNR issues that I know will not be addressed this evening, but if the tentative plan is approved, we will anticipate an appeal and also addressing this separately as it relates with the HOA and the dedication of an easement. I also believe there's agency concerns, one addressed or brought to the attention of tonight's commission by the applicant related to fire. I don't believe there's been anything updated that's been submitted related to the safety associated with access and emergency plan. So for tonight, I strongly suggest you reconsider if you are going to move to approve the plan. I do think that there needs to be additional time and adjustments related to access and not only the access, the easement, the easement associated with Horizon View Avenue.
Thank you. Next we have Kent Knopflech, followed by Michael Craig.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kent Knopflech. I'm the president of the Shadow Ridge Coalition. You've already heard from our attorney, we are not opposed to the entire Donovan Development. We are strongly opposed to the extension of Horizon View and Hacienda Ridge. I bought a $900,000 home that backs to Horizon View Avenue. I was promised by the selling realtor and Tykor title that nothing would be built beyond my house, that it was permanent common open space. And here we are fighting to keep that common open space and our property values. I state that the planning commission and the board of county commissioners are engaging in a terrible precedent by allowing a developer to put streets through another subdivision's common open space. This kind of precedent will lead to endless litigation against the county, excuse me. The laws are clear that a street cannot be put through common open space. County building standard 110, 408, 45D, numerous other violations of law have also been expressed by members of our subdivision and are a part of the staff report. In the staff report, Mr. Geisinger from County Planning references the laws found in NRS 278A and states the Donovan Project is a common open space development and falls under 278A and Article 442. County building standards under Article 442, 110, 44235 also has language that common open space areas shall not include areas devoted to public or private vehicular streets. Article four says of, for section 110, 432, double zero states, the intent of these regulations is to protect the public health, safety and welfare by A, protecting existing and providing new recreation in scenic areas. Nowhere in the 538 page staff report is there any statement from county legal counsel in response to the law and ordinance violations raised by numerous of our owners. Our attorney, or these statements are in the staff report. Where is county legal's response to all of these alleged violations? Further, should the commission to decide to approve this tentative plan, we request that the motion indicate that all conditions stated in various department and agency letters be made as conditions of approval, not just the one motion with the only condition being to mitigate invasive noxious weeds. The proposed motion is grossly inaccurate regarding enforcement of the conditions of approval. Further, Mr. Donovan has other options for primary ingress and egress to the north and south. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Michael Craig, followed by Diane Craig.
Thank you, Commissioners. Michael Craig, I am part of Shadow Ridge. I, I occupy the houses right behind that new proposed road on Horizon Ridge. This is a document that I have forwarded many times to the county. Forty-two violations of city or county ordinances. I'm expecting, or I would like to see our lawyer to actually get those responses from the county so we can move forward. Second, and more importantly, is that this document with these cards, we met with the county on September 5th of this year. And they even committed that the non-motorized vehicle, Note 18 on Phase Plan Four of this, of this development was still in place and still is in place today. So how do you get a non-motorized vehicle access point into play that is now a motorized vehicle access? We would like to know this. That motorized vehicle access will bring the new road to within five feet of my fence line. I want to know why. As we move forward, this is an interesting thing. The letter that they talk about from Mr. Geislinger notes that section 278A and 278 are not applicable. But yet if you read Article 442, it references right back to the actions and the laws that are in, contained with, within 278A. I would like to know, is this a nice circle of events that is happening? Because we, the general public, want to know why this is becoming a circle. And there's another acronym I could use, but I'm not going to use it in this, with these people in the room. Lastly, there is numerous letters that are within that 536 page document that simply state that this should be denied. I'm employing all of you to actually think and come up with better resolutions going forward on this action. And if a delay is, is in place, fine, it's a delay. The issue is, is if it's approved, you've heard from our lawyer. Thank you.
Next we have Diane Craig, followed by Tim Cipriani.
I'm not going to speak.
Okay, next up we have Tim Cipriani, followed by Lou Chris, no, Tim Cipriani is our last public comment in chambers.
Want to be able to show some pictures? My name is Tim Cipriani. I've lived in the Shadow Ridge Development for over seven years. We were originally told when we bought our property that there wouldn't be nothing built behind us. Now we know that there is an impending event for the Donovan Ranch Estates. I'm speaking today on public safety, on our safety, our residents' safety. What you're seeing right now is a picture of me sitting in my truck on Horizon View facing west as I attempt to turn south on Pyramid Highway. You can see that it's obstructed by two telephone poles and you can see that there's traffic coming. What you don't see is that I'm 10 feet forward of the stop sign because that's the only way you can see the traffic that's coming. It's a blind spot. If, if you continue, you'll see another example of this. One of our other residents, again, pulled 10 feet in front of the stop sign in order to get a clear view so that they can safely turn onto Pyramid Highway going south. It's a very dangerous intersection at this point. This was in less than two minutes, people trying to access Pyramid Highway to get out. It ended up there being eight cars stacked up behind each other trying to get out. It's unsafe on that, on that road. Sorry. You'll start to see that we've got traffic forming here. On the left, you'll see a red car. On the, across the street, you'll see a white truck. As I go through these, you'll see the traffic that happens. You get trucks, more trucks. You'll see the cars are now piling up because they can't turn. A school bus, more traffic, more cars piling up to turn left into the industrial area. This is now about five minutes that we're waiting for this to come through. So you can see right here that anybody that was trying to turn out on the pyramid, whether it be going north or south, they're blind. So I'm happy to hear that they're talking about putting a stoplight in there. It's past due, but don't be like Californian, build it afterwards. Build it now. We've got a safety issue today that needs to be addressed. Somebody's going to end up dying on that road because people can't get out. I've grown up here, was one of the first residents in Golden Valley and had to traverse 395 back then in order to go north or south. This is as dangerous as it was then in Golden Valley. So I pour you to do something today to make a change for the safety of our residents. I have no further public comments in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Nothing? Okay.
Wait, I had one, just go up.
Okay, go ahead.
Blaine and Priscilla, please go ahead, state your first last name for the record.
Hi, Priscilla Tar, and Blaine is here, so I'm going to speak for both of us. Thank you, Commissioners. So I want to talk about the stoplight. I do agree with that. I think that's great, but I think if you decide whatever you decide to approve or disapprove or delay, I think that it's important that we have a stoplight. It's very dangerous. I want you to think about your own children, your own family members. There's a lot of teenagers that live in this neighborhood. A lot of them are starting to drive. We would not want that blood on our hands if there was, God forbid, a horrible accident to occur. The other thing is I object to using Horizon View specifically because we don't have a light. Many of us understand that Donovan wants to build those houses back there, but we do not agree with using Horizon View. That's also our neighborhood. That's our common space where we gather together for many festivities and gatherings. And so that would not be appropriate to do that. And so I really want you to think about the light. Again, the light, we need the light and we need it now. This morning, I was behind many law enforcement, military live in this area. I was behind a cop and it probably took him maybe 10 minutes to get out of Horizon View this morning. It was quite a wait for us. So it's getting dangerous. We have trucks coming right at us and then we have people coming from both sections. So before we go and approve a whole estate plan here, we also need to look at the safety issues that we have right now. And I think a delay with all these issues and unknowns going on is probably appropriate at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more public comment?
I have no further hands raised on Zoom.
All right, one last call for public comments. Anybody got any? All right, with that, we'll close public comment on this matter and bring it back to the board for discussion. What do we got? Your questions? Do you guys have any discussion or questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Commissioner Lazarewski, a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
On the issue of the traffic light, I appreciate you guys accepting the condition that upon the 50th, that the traffic light be built, would you guys be open to just pushing that forward since it would honestly probably help your construction project as well?
What would your trigger, proposed trigger be?
The start of construction at the first occupancy?
I'm not in a position to, I'll have to talk to the rest of the team before we could pause on that, I think.
Okay. Would you be able to discuss it with them this evening if we take a short recess?
You want to take it, Scott? Okay.
Yeah, not immediately.
Hi, for the record, Scott Christie, representing the applicant. We are, we are willing to do it earlier. The traffic report says the 51st C of O and if, if, if the commission would like to see it at the first C of O, we would do that. Thank you. Yep.
All right, anybody else got any other questions?
I have a question for staff. I don't know if it's for engineering or legal, but it is surrounding the easement issue. I just want to verify that Washoe County will ultimately hold the easement since it will be a county road.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Dwayne Smith, I'm the county engineer. I would like to state that as a condition of the approval of this project, that the roadway improvements be dedicated to Washoe County. That includes also the condition that the land underneath. So what we're looking for is the, the land, the roadway improvements, the storm drainage, those are the requirements of the tentative map condition for acceptance by Washoe County.
Perfect, thank you.
Then I have one more question for you, sir. That open space at the end of the Shadow Ridge Drive, it says it's the homeowner association land. How is that going to be deeded to you if they don't, maybe I'm missing some of them if they don't own it, Donovan Ranch?
I can't speak specifically for the applicant, the applicant's representatives about what that process will look like, but as a condition for the tentative map approval, that is the requirement that we placed. They've accepted that condition.
Okay. And then my question is for the applicant and how, how is that going to be transferred over if it's?
Thank you. Josh Hicks from McDonnell Corona on behalf of the Donavons. There was a detailed analysis, I sent a letter in, it's part of the record, that lays out how these rights have been preserved over the years for the access rights. Those rights include the right to grant the roadway to the county. So that's all in place and when we get to that point to satisfy the condition that Dwayne was talking about, there'll be a grant over of all those rights.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I need to clarify a point on the traffic signal if I may. My name is Lauren Chilson, Principal Traffic Engineer with Headway Transportation, preparer of the traffic study. The reason that the traffic study cited the 51st C of O as the trigger point for the traffic signal was because that's the point in time when volumes will reach the level that NDOT will permit the traffic signal. So I just want to clarify, while the applicant team is willing to have that condition at the first lot, I am not certain that NDOT will approve it at that point. We are confident they would approve it at the 51st lot. And so that is the reason for that trigger and just ask you to be mindful of that and that we don't want to have a condition we can't satisfy. Thank you, sir.
Understood. Did you have something to add to that?
Again, for the record, Dwayne Smith, county engineer, I would just quickly say to Lauren's comment that we, we're happy to work with NDOT. We understand their rules, their requirements, and I believe that based on the current conditions and based on the commitment that the applicant has made, I think we can make some good inroads with NDOT regarding that permitting process.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'll, I'll ask him for a motion. I'll take a motion on it.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve tentative subdivision map case WTM24-002 for RT Donovan and Corp Company Incorporated with the conditions included as Exhibit A amended such that the traffic light would be permitted such to NDOT agreement upon the, and constructed upon the first certificate of occupancy rather than 50th, having made all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110 dot 608 dot 25. Having made all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110.608.25.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. At this time, we will take a 10-minute break.
Bring the meeting back to order. We are with 7C, which is Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA24-003 White Owl Drive and Red Rock Road. And I have a disclosure. I am part of the community organization out in that area. My property is approximately a mile from where these two projects are, so they will not affect me, and it does not affect my voting in this in any way, shape, or form.
Mr. Chair, can you explain a little bit more about the community association that you're...how is that related to any of this?
This is...it's not related to any of this specifically. What we do is we try to, like our last project, we helped a couple elderly ladies clean up their property, some dead branches and things like that. So it's more of just a community-wide effort to help people and to get information out to the other residents. It's a volunteer organization. We do charge $25 a year if you want to be part of it, but it's not mandatory.
Okay, and so you were mentioning your property is approximately a mile away from both of these.
Approximately right in the middle of these two.
Of the next...this item and the next item, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you do not have any concerns that your property will be affected by the vote either way on either this item or the next item?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, so Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA24-003 White Owl Drive and Red Rock Road. Mr. Lloyd, please announce.
For hearing discussion and possible action to recommend adoption of a regulatory zone amendment to the North Valley's Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone on two parcels from low-density suburban to 163.92 acres of medium-density suburban and 5.99 acres of open space, and if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner...sorry, Planner Tim Evans.
All right, Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Tim Evans, Planner, so the case before you today is, excuse me, Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA24-003 for White Owl Drive and Red Rock Road. So the request before you is to change the regulatory zone on two parcels totaling approximately, actually over 160 acres. So within those two parcels, there will be approximately 163.92 acres of medium-density suburban zoning that is proposed, and the other 5.99 acres of both of those parcels is proposed to be open-space zoning. So as mentioned earlier, there are two parcels subject to this regulatory zone amendment. One parcel's 80 acres and the other is 89.91, for a total of 169.91 acres. So the subject parcels are located within the North Valley's planning area, and the properties are zoned...currently zoned, low-density suburban. On the screen, you can see the site plan that was submitted with the Regulatory Zone Amendment application. To the north is the 80-acre parcel, and to the south is...or, excuse me, the 89.91-acre parcel, and to the south is the 80-acre parcel. And the yellow portion that you can see there is along the north or the top and the right or the...would be the east side of the screen, is the open-space zoning that is proposed, which totals 5.99 acres, and the remaining portion is all proposed to be MDS. And I'll go into a little bit more detail as to why the open-space zoning is proposed a little bit later in the presentation. So the parcels to the north, east, and a portion of the west of the subject parcels are approximately one acre in size and develop with single-family dwellings. And to the west as well, the remaining portion to the west is BLM land. So to the south of this is a fairly large subdivision totaling 780 acres that was recently approved, called the Silver Hills/Silver Knolls Community, and that is all the property to the south. I mean, it has a specific...excuse me, it is a specific planned development. And the purpose of the open-space regulatory zone being proposed along those edges of the two parcels is to address having a 50-foot buffer...excuse me, a 50-foot buffer between the larger lots and the proposed higher density. So based on the acreage and the proposed zoning, there would be an allowed maximum density potential of 489 dwelling units due to that 163.92 acres of MDS zoning. And for the open-space portion, there is no density that is allowed, so no dwelling units would be allowed within that open space. So this project was sent to multiple agencies and departments for review. So it was sent out specifically to engineering, and I spoke with the utilities division of engineering in relation to the sewer service. So sewer service for these parcels would be provided by the City of Reno and the Reno Stead wastewater...from the Reno Stead wastewater facility that is within the City of Reno. And the piping itself would be owned by Washoe County if an actual development was to come before and if the zoning is changed. So if the zoning is changed today, there's a potential for a development possibly in the future or something like that. If someone was to come in and do that, that's what would end up happening, is that the City of Reno, within their wastewater facility, would serve the proposed development. And there is adequate capacity to serve the proposed density with this regulatory zone amendment. There's a total of approximately 1,081 residential units that could be served by that facility currently. And so the...as mentioned, there was...this project was sent out to multiple agencies for review. One of them was the Truckee Meadows Water Agency, or, excuse me, Water Authority. And so comment was provided from them stating that water service could be provided with annexation into the retail water service area of Tomahawk. So there is the availability of services to serve the proposed density. And so access for this...the subject parcels is provided by Red Rock, Red Rock Road, and a traffic impact letter was provided by the applicant, and all of that information was sent to engineering for review, as mentioned earlier, and no concerns were provided by engineering in relation to traffic. And so in relation to, like, public health and safety and those types of items, the project information was sent to the Northern Nevada Public Health, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and no concerns were provided from any one of those agencies in relation to the project. So the project was properly noticed, and it was sent out to a total of 41 parcels. And as of the preparation of this presentation, no public comments have been received by staff in relation to the proposed project. So staff is able to make all seven required findings, as detailed on pages 15 and 17 in the staff...15 through 17 in the staff report. And staff recommends the planning commission approve Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA24-003, and provides the motion on the screen as well as in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions, and the applicant's representative also has a presentation as well.
Wonderful, thank you. Would you like to do your presentation now? You're welcome to.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Garrett Gordon, tonight on behalf of Lifestyle Homes. Behind me with Lifestyle Homes are three generations of listeners. We have Bob listener, Peter listener, and Dustin listener with us tonight, as well as our traffic consultant, if there are any specific questions. Tonight, the item, as you just heard, is the White Owl Drive and Red Rock Road Regulatory Zone Amendment. You've seen the project site, just want to jump to this slide. So current zoning is LDS, one unit per acre. We're proposing two changes. One is to go from LDS to MDS to three units per acre. But I do really want to stress that area in yellow. It's a open-space buffer around the north and around the east sides of the property. I pulled this right from the staff report. It's not laid out as staff showed, but I really like this angle here where you can see on the north...on the east side there, on the top of the page, there's one unit per acre. Also, on the north side, there's one unit per acre. So we thought, given we're not at the tentative map stage, we can't lay out any landscaping, buffers, or screening at this point, but actually wanted to rezone 50 feet to open space to make sure we have that transition area. And you'll see where we came up with that idea was the Silver Hills Land Use Plan that was approved. You can see on the right-hand side there, on the east side of Red Rock, in yellow, is the currently approved land use plan for Silver Hills. And you can see along that eastern border, we did the same thing. There was matching density, there was a dedicated...and a dedicated 50-foot open-space buffer. So we think the findings were made here and can be made again of having that nice 50-foot buffer, again, to have that transition from the one unit per acre to three units per acre. And why are we proposing MDS? Because it's currently allowed under the existing master plan. So I'm not here before you tonight asking for a big master plan change or a big change to the character of the North Valley's area plan. You can see here where master plan suburban residential, which allows, of course, which allows, of course, the low-density residential that's suburban, excuse me, that is currently the zoning. And here, MDS is allowed under the master plan, but we thought, again, rather than a hard boundary of LDS and MDS, a nice buffer, open-space buffer, really created a great transition, again, using the model of the Silver Hills Land Use Plan. Traffic, as you heard, staff, the traffic engineer, ours, as well as your engineer, does not have any concerns, will operate within the level of service policy...with the level of service policy, not only the baseline plus project conditions, but future plus project conditions, also anticipated to operate within the level of service, given Red Rock Road widening, it's on its way from two lanes...from two to four lanes. Also, I think it's really important that this is just a zone change, so a traffic impact study and recommendations of access and other more specific traffic conditions will be discussed at the time of the tentative map application. Of course, the item you just heard was a tentative map, and lights were discussed and locations of access. We anticipate to have those discussions with a tentative map, but for now, our traffic letter was satisfactory to county engineering. So I'll focus on the findings a little bit, which I like to do. Staff recommends approval, that all findings can be made, but again, number one, you're subs...we are in substantial conformance with the master plan. Some quotes, use to shift from rural residential to medium-density residential demonstrating North Valley's varying needs, direct development of residential densities greater than one unit per acre, per five acres in the TMSA, where it can utilize planned, local, and regional infrastructure. Also compatibility, which of course is important, and we think that's a very good reason to have that open-space buffer in order to create that compatibility with the LDS to the north and to the east. And of course, to the south is absolutely compatible with the 680-unit residential Change conditions, this is also important. Kind of staff kind of asked us, hey, what's changed out here? You know, why is this zoning needed? And a couple reasons, I'll give you three. One is we need to increase the availability of housing in the area. Why? Not because I say it, but because the Washoe County master plan and the regional plan confirm those policies are needed not only in the whole region, but also just specifically in Washoe County. Given reason number two, my second bullet point there, the consensus forecast anticipates that unincorporated Washoe County will need to absorb up to about 16,000 people, population increase between now and 2042, which results in the need of about 6,800 extra dwelling units. So we think our addition here, a modest little piece of that larger number, is appropriate at this time. And three, some change conditions. So I'm sure you're all aware, but there's a lot going on at the Stead Airport. Dermani Properties entered into a development agreement, gosh, a while ago, to develop portions of the Stead Airport. And finally, it's coming on onboard. You've seen, I'm sure if you've driven by there, two industrial buildings are up, the walls are up, and it continues to develop. And what's coming in there? About 3,000 acres of construction and operation of maintenance of office buildings, flex office space, some retail that I know that's important to this community, manufacturing, industrial, other approved uses, but also some infrastructure necessary for these uses, but we think is going to help the entire community with roadways, parking areas, Moya will be extended, additional infrastructure for water, sewer, gas, telephone. So a lot going on in this area by virtue of the plan, but also the surrounding area. You can see not only that the Stead Airport is up and going, but this area is really developing into a nice employment center. And what does an employment center see? Need some good lifestyle builds, kind of entry-level housing. And you'll hear, if you have any questions from our traffic engineer, but in regards to the reverse commute, this is exactly what we need and this area needs and kind of anywhere needs, is you want to keep the jobs and the homes in the same place. I think we want to keep trips off of 395, get people off of commuting down to Reno, back up to North Valleys, making sure we have the employment center next to the housing. And again, the proposed land uses for the Reno Stead Airport include industrial, commercial, office park, and retail, which I know is really exciting for the area, but no residential. And so we think this is a great match kind of for change of conditions to rezone some MDS right near the area. And again, Phase 1 is already under construction, over a million square foot of warehouse industrial space is under development, and we think, again, this is a nice complement, our proposal to what's happening in this area. And also change conditions as far as infrastructure that's come in, RTP, regional road improvements, 2017 to 2021 Lemon Drive widened from four lanes to six lanes, also Moya between Red Rock and Echo widened from two lanes to four lanes, a military road. The airport is part of that, and we believe that, and our traffic engineer does, and so does the county, believe that our proposed rezoning also is a complement to that infrastructure. Again, as far as adequate transportation, recreational utilities, facilities, I just quote right from staff that all needed facilities are present or will be provided when there is a project. And as staff mentioned, there is a specific comment from engineering, from the City of Reno, that they are increasing the wastewater treatment facility. It will be expanded, but for now, there's 1,081 residential units remaining, and certainly our increased falls under that cap right now, so there's no sewer concerns. And again, right from staff, this proposed amendment will not adversely impact implementation of any of the master plan. And again, desired pattern of growth, I would just comment that the consensus forecast and the change conditions in the area certainly accommodate and meet this finding. And just to close, kind of exciting, I think, this was in Reno Gazette Journal just a couple weeks ago about the Stead Airport, a Silicon Valley startup building a new giga factory up there for lithium-sulfur battery facility. They're investing more than a billion dollars into this area, 125-acre campus, and increasing staffing, we think, to over 1,000 employees. So we think the lifestyle product, entry-level home product, would be a perfect complement to keep, for not only these jobs, but to keep these employees up in the area, living in the area, and hopefully taking advantage of the retail and other components that are coming along with it. So we certainly appreciate all of staff's efforts on this application. They're recommending approval, and we ask that you do the same, and thank you for the time. Mr. Chairman and the commission.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment. Do we have any public comment?
In chambers, I have Lou Christensen, followed by Jay Allen.
Hello again. My comments are pertinent to items 8C and 8D. Facing the prospect of more than 2,000 dwelling units in the Silver Knolls area alone, new dwelling units in the Silver Knolls area alone, I'm very much against any actions which will make the Osage and White Owl requests being heard this evening more likely to advance. We do not need any entry-level home products in the Silver Knolls area. The request as presented should not be approved because they are inconsistent with the master plan. Specifically, there's seven items that they need to be consistent with, and they're inconsistent with at least three of the items. Trying to find my place here. The development proposed within the...the development should promote the development of walkable, mixed-use communities that meet daily needs of residents, balanced jobs and housing, reduce need for automobile trips, encourage utilization of public transportation. Higher-density dwelling units in this minimally-developed area do not accomplish any of these goals. From envisioned 2040, scenic resources are generally present in this area but have been partially diminished. Future development in this area will further diminish that resource. No adverse effects. If these amendments are approved and the developer can pursue development, there will be adverse effects in terms of pollution, air pollution, solid waste, flooding, and congestion. Congestion on the roads, particularly in light of the already-approved 1,800-plus dwelling units in Silver Hills. That's all I have, thank you. And like I say, these apply to 8C and 8D, it's the same area, so they'll be the same effect.
I think it's 7...7...maybe 7C, 7D? I think that's where we're at.
I believe that's 8.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I recrosst that at 8. You're correct. My mistake.
Lastly, for this item in chambers, I have Jay Allen.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jay Allen. I'm a resident of Silver Knolls. There are many reasons for the commissioners to vote against zoning changes. Some of the items brought up earlier seem to be a little bit misleading. As far as services, police, there's approximately a 30 to 90-minute response time at the present time. Fire, approximately the same. I called in a rollover crash near the Red Rock area that they're planning to change. Ambulance and fire response was over 25 minutes. Schools, Silver Lake Elementary, O'Brien Middle School, North Valley High School, they're all overcrowded. If you bring in more residents, you will be...probably need to build new schools, which would be a significant expense to the commission. Roads, there's only one. It's two lanes, it's Red Rock. It was paved in the '60s, '70s, and '80s in sections. It's not engineered for increased traffic. Is right now, it also poses a danger. It's been closed because of wildfire, it's been closed from serious accidents, and it's the only access to that area. The master plan usually calls for filling in areas, there's open areas before that needs to be developed. On the Zoom meeting with the CAB, they mentioned wastewater would be treated and pumped into the ground. Golden Valley has already done that, and there is a degradation in their groundwater. I'm sure you're familiar with the Swan Light debacle where lawsuits were brought against the City of Reno, and the City of Reno was held liable. Degrading the groundwater below EPA standards could leave the county liable for damages. This extends...this is for both 8C and 8D, so these proposed changes could and will be fairly expensive for the county if they do approve these changes. Thank you.
I have no further comments in chamber, but I do have Lisa. Lisa, go ahead and unmute. Go ahead and mute, Lisa. Give us your first and last name, please.
Lisa Eckard. Can you guys hear me?
You can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. I currently recently purchased a home on White Owl Drive, moving from an already-planned community within the Stead area. And this home was purchased specifically for the reason that this is a rural area, that there's a lot of open space, that there...you know all your neighbors. Once a planned community comes in, it creates degradation of the environment within the area, increases in crime, increases in noise pollution, light pollution. This area is specifically rural. People out here own horses, you know, we have cattle, chickens. This planned community will create an environment that is not conducive with what already exists in the area, not to mention what other people have already mentioned in regards to the schools in the area are already extremely overcrowded with kids not even being able to have room on a bus and having to sit in aisles because of how many children are already in this area. Increase in crime as well in the planned community where I was at previously, there would be people using drugs and selling drugs right across the street from where I lived. And it was not a poor area, a negative area. This was right across the street from the North Valley's Regional Park, the Airplane Water Park in that area. So I feel that if this is approved, all of that is going to come this way and decrease the integrity of the existing area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have caller ID in 4353. Please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Hi, my name is Doug Heron. I've been a resident of Silver Knolls all my life, basically. And there's a...it's a neat community out here. It's rural, it's...there's an ambiance that when someone purchases a property out here, there's a certain ambiance that comes with it, that's part of it. And for all the reasons previously stated, that will be diminished. Property...the property will change. And I have serious concerns about the water and how it's going to impact my well. I'm fairly close to the proposed development. And I think if this is approved, with the congestion, the pollution, the water issue, the waste issue, all these things are going to impact my property. And that's unfair to the residents that have already lived here. Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like I have Tammy Rougeau. Tammy, please unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Tammy Rougeau of Silver Knolls. And this comment, much like the others, applies to not only this proposal, but also the next proposal, all of which... not only this proposal but also the next proposal, all of which are on Osage and are in the community of Silver Knolls. Husband and I have been residents of Silver Knolls for 34 years, and while we've seen the community grow, the character of the community has not changed. This neighborhood is often considered to be a hidden gem with the quiet environment, wildlife, and the ability to enjoy a rural lifestyle, to include livestock while still being close enough to needed services. As previously stated, services to this area are currently insufficient. Red Rock Road cannot handle current traffic, let alone any additional traffic. And further increasing the number of houses out here in a medium-density area will create additional stress on services as well as our schools. We recently had a fire on our property, and we were only lucky that it was 4:30 in the morning and not 4:30 in the afternoon that allowed the fire department to get here within 20 minutes. That's an unheard-of response time for any emergency services in this area. And adding more homes and more traffic to the area will just further congest. From the master plan and particularly the North Valley's character statement, it states that future growth in the area will be managed to minimize negative impacts on the character of the communities, particularly those impacts related to the generation of light, air, water pollution, open space, wildlife, and wildlife habitat, and the blending of new development with any existing development. The scenic value of the natural hills and valleys is an important component of the North Valley's character. By bringing in 131 houses where there should only be 41, you can only degrade and generate more light pollution, air pollution, water pollution. You'll take away from our open space the wildlife and the habitat, as well as bringing in additional air pollution and water pollution. If you read the description and the character policies for Silver Knolls, it's described as a more isolated suburban area with a distinct equestrian theme. If you bring in this medium-density-type community into the middle of what we have, you will only degrade the existing areas and cause stress to not only our traffic and our land, but also our property. In order to approve this, you have to come up with... You have to approve at least three of seven items. This is inconsistent with the master plan. Number one, the proposed amendment is not in substantial compliance...
Ms. Rougeau, I did interrupt, but you're out of time.
Thank you.
No further public comments in chamber. No hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I just want to give the public another chance. If you want to speak, sir, you got to come over here, fill out a piece of paper after you speak. Come up here to the microphone, state your name, and then you've got three minutes to speak. And same with anybody else in the area. If you want to speak, now's your time.
Hi. My name is Howard Owens. This is the first meeting I've attended. I wasn't aware that I had to fill out a piece of paper.
That's okay.
So I apologize. But a couple of things. I want to echo what somebody said way early in the meeting. The infrastructure should be in place before the other stuff starts. Red Rock and the streets there, they're pretty bad. And there's going to be an impact on wildlife as well. Where I live, I've got bobcats, coyotes, and mountain lions. And I'm not that far from White Owl Drive. It's just around a corner. So there's going to be an impact on that. Sewer water, assuming, like other areas that I've lived in, once the sewer and the water comes in, you're going to force existing residents to connect to it. And so that's going to drive up our costs as well with a monthly water sewer bill. And the last thing I want to say, just as a side note, I worked at General Motors for a number of years on electric vehicles and lithium batteries. And the lithium battery factory that's going in, lithium batteries are very, very dangerous. We had a battery under test that blew up at night, luckily, and it leveled the whole building at the Warren Engineering Technical Center in Detroit. And there was a semi-truck that had a lithium battery start... A fire start on the way to Vegas, and they closed the highway down for several days till they could get the fire out. So it's very dangerous. And the gentleman mentioned sulfur. The problem with sulfur lithium batteries is that if something happens, it emits a toxic gas, and one sniff will kill you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
So Brendan, do we have more?
No further public comment in chambers or on Zoom.
Okay. With that, no close public comment. We'll bring them back to the board for discussion or questions. Has anybody got anything? So I got a couple of questions. So Tim, I got a couple of questions for you. So first of all, Silver Hills is right across the street, right, basically from this? So Red Rock Road is the separator. East is White Owl. And then you've got, going west, I guess it would be Silver Hills, right? And Silver Hills is 1,872 homes, from what I understand. And then this project is for eight... What is it, 830 or... How many homes is this one for?
Tim Evans, Planner.
1,872 plus 680. That's a total of 2,552 homes that you're proposing or that's going to be coming out to that area. Is that correct?
Tim Evans, Planner. So yeah, as far as the number of homes for the Silver Hills development, I believe it is somewhere in that number.
Okay.
Let me take a look real quick. As far as... Yeah. So it's 1,872 lots that are proposed for that subdivision.
Right.
And then specifically for this regulatory zone amendment, the maximum density that could be built, if someone was to propose a subdivision, would be 489.
489. Okay. So Silver Hills, 1,872, and then this one's 489 plus the Osage. So that comes up to 680, if my calculations are correct. So the sewer that you talked about only has a capacity of 1,081. So that... Or that leaves us a negative of 1,471.
So the remaining sewer capacity of 1,081?
Right.
That is beyond what Silver Hills... Silver Hills is already taken into account in that number.
Is that? Okay.
Yes, exactly.
All right. And then the sewer, from what I saw, it wasn't going to be able... Nobody was going to be able to go anything above that until 2028, right, when they get that new injection site put in?
Right. So they are in the process of expanding that site.
Right.
But with the current capacity that is there, with 1,081, there is the potential to serve the density that's proposed.
So is that on a first-come, first-served basis?
That is a good question. I believe, from what I recall, I believe that it is based on the email that I was provided.
Maybe Janelle can answer that.
And I will have Janelle answer it from engineering.
Good evening. Janelle Thomas, Senior Licensed Engineer for Washoe County. Yes, sewer capacity is typically on a first-come, first-served basis. And I believe, you know, we operate in a very similar manner that City of Reno does. And so that would be based on the timing in which the applications for final construction would occur. With this particular rezone project, the timing would be that they would rezone it, and then they would have to come in with a tentative map and then go through that process before they could even have a final map. So there is an extended timeline that the applicant would be looking at regardless of, you know, whether this gets approved or not.
Okay. And then I was looking at the staff report. On page 45, it shows approved future units. And so I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 future-approved units already. So on a first-come, first-served with 1,081 spaces left at the sewer capacity, I don't see how we can say that it's got acceptable sewer. Because it does... The numbers just don't add up on a first-come, first-served.
Yeah. When we checked in with City of Reno, because they would be the wastewater treatment provider, that they indicated that this would be within their, you know, service capacity currently.
Just for these two lots, though, right?
Uh...
Just these two on a first-come, first-served. I guess I'm confused because the way I read it, it was a first-come, first-served. We're talking about two zoning amendments for 1,081 total homes. But there's already nine other projects approved out in that area on a first-come, first-served basis, so they may not be able to get sewed.
And I don't know what their, you know, what their end game is and what the status is of the projects that are moving forward. And so I believe that if there was anything that was approved, you're citing nine separate projects that have received approval, then I don't know what the timing is for that. But I believe that that was taken into consideration when we were provided with the data that provides for that available capacity.
Okay. Okay. And then I saw in the staff report that you provided some kind of document, but it wasn't presented to us. Can you speak on that?
Tim Evans, Planner. So specifically, what page of the staff report are you referring to?
So where was it? It was back here in the back. It was on page 39. It says, "Please see attached engineering comments and conditions related to the above referenced entitlement application," but I don't see that actual document.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So in relation to that specific comment there, it's the back-and-forth between staff and engineering. And that attached... What was attached to that email was the comments from engineering. So it was the memo that's included in Exhibit B, agency comments to the staff report.
Okay. And then... So let's see. So we didn't address the traffic study. There was a note... There was a comment made. I'm trying to remember what it said. It's something about an RTC project in the works, but for recently. But when I looked, I found differential or different project dates. One of them said 26 to 30. The other one said 30 to 50, things along that line. Do we have any clarification on that? Because I can't find anything. In fact, I've seen documentation that says there's no plans for Red Rock Road expansion at all until 20... Closer to 2050. So do we have any documents that I can look at for that? Because this really concerns me with all this housing going out in the area with a two-lane road. And then where the road meets the freeway, so over a 6% grade, we're on a single lane to get on the freeway north and south. And so that's a safety issue that I'm a little bit concerned about, and I just need some clarification on that.
Okay. Janelle Thomas, Senior Licensed Engineer. I am certain that that is referencing the regional transportation plan, which is part of the RTC's programming of their various projects. I believe that this young man behind me may have the answer.
There we go. Thank you.
Dylan Axtehl, Headway Transportation, Traffic Engineer. RTC does have planned widening on Red Rock Road and Moya Boulevard in the 2050 RTP. And it's programmed in the 2026-2030 timeframe. So approximately the next 10 years.
In the next 10 years. Now, does that cover the... Under the freeway at Red Rock Road from Virginia Street to Silver Knolls or Silver Lake Boulevard?
Yeah, and the widening's between US 395 to Placerville Drive, just north of this project.
I didn't see that when I looked it up at RTC. So I can't confirm that. It just stated that there's something going to happen, but it's from the 2035 to 2050 project timeline.
When we looked up the current 2050 RTP, that's the timeframe that we found.
And do you have any documentation about the 395 Red Rock Road from Virginia Street to Silver?
I could pull up the 2050 RTP.
Right. I looked at that, and it didn't say anything about that intersection. Nothing at all. And it's a one-lane road. With the increased traffic, we could be having an issue. That's just my concern.
Again, I'm pretty confident that the 2050 RTP states in that timeframe, widening from Red Rock Road and Moya from two to four lanes is within that timeframe.
Okay. Did you have something to say, sir? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great questions. Yeah, I also can verify what that traffic engineer said on behalf of the record. But also would note, right, this is a zone change in regards to a traffic letter from the traffic engineers. But we absolutely know if and when I'm standing before you for a tentative map, that we have to have a traffic generation letter with level of service for every single intersection you're discussing, including whether or not Red Rock Road has been widened. There's certainly a chance, depending on how the development plays out, if I'm standing before you with a tentative map and it does not meet level of service on Red Rock Road because the widening hasn't occurred, then a tentative map couldn't get approved. So I think everything you're acknowledging is absolutely correct, and we will absolutely make sure it has to be legally incorporated into a tentative map when there's a project.
I understand that. But we're approving a change to this low-density suburban area, and so this comes into play at the present time in my mind. Go ahead, Janelle.
Yeah. Janelle Thomas, Senior Licensed Engineer, for the record. Yeah. So at this phase of development and the current discretionary permit that is being requested at this time is solely being analyzed based upon what the worst-case scenario is, as you may kind of view it. So what we look at from the engineering perspective is, we want to know what the rezone looks like. And so by that traffic analysis, we can determine if we're going to blow up a street and we're going to make it intolerable. And so we look at those level-of-service criteria to make sure that the number of homes that could be developed within this area under this new rezoned category, that it does fit within that box. And so that's why Lauren Chilson and his staff created the traffic analysis that we requested. And that did show that we feel confident that we can recommend approval for this rezone and that we are not going to end up in deficit regarding the traffic.
Okay. When you requested that, did you take the Silver Knolls into account?
It takes into consideration the existing conditions on the roadway, as well as what those future conditions are with the rezone in place.
As of today, right? So the Silver Hills isn't even built yet.
Correct.
So...
It's going to take into consideration the whole area.
Okay. I... Yeah. Okay. I just didn't see that on the RTC website when I looked at it. And I looked at that comprehensive plan. It's about 500 pages long.
Right.
And I don't see it.
Yeah. And RTP does have tables that, you know, if you're not very careful, each line is very hard to discern.
That's a great point. Because on a couple of their tables, I was looking at their interactive map. And if you click on Red Rock Road, you know, a little bubble pops up. It says there's a decrease in traffic going on for the next 10-plus years. It's going from a high number to a lower number every five years for the next 10, 15 years.
And I would defer to the traffic experts to talk to that point if you want to debate that.
It's okay. It's all right. And, you know, I'm just trying to... I'm trying to make the master plan approval process here. I'm just trying to look at each and every one of these things that are before me, and I'm just having a really, really hard time approving this because I can't see where it meets any of these master plan amendments or anything other than the military base. I'm just having a real hard time. So I'm just trying to...
Okay.
So don't take me wrong. I'm just trying to ask questions for my own understanding because obviously I don't understand.
That's okay.
Yeah. And then there was a comment about...
We have the map for RTC.
It's okay. There, there was a comment about services where you want people to, to live out in the North Valleys in this area, and I just, you know, it kinda, it kinda concerns me, there's a lack, a major lack of commercial. We don't, there's not even a tire store out in the North Valleys. So if you get, if you put all of these residents into, into the Silver Knolls area, they're going to have to travel to town to, to get tire service, they're going to have to travel to town to, to go out to eat, because there's only certain, there's like twelve Mexican restaurants out there, and it's, I don't know, it just, to me, I'm just having a hard time understanding it, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly appreciate your concerns. If, we do have the map pulled up on the RTC website, if you'd like to see it. Secondly, to your point about retail, commercial, so maybe I didn't probably get the point across very well on the Reno-Stead Airport redevelopment. That includes retail, that includes commercial. And I've represented a number of, of properties up in this area, and there's always been a push, both at City of Reno, who had, represents some of the North Valleys and Oslo County, we need retail and commercial. And we's always heard, you know, straight from the retailers, and even the Retailer Association, more rooftops. And so we think that we want that Reno-Stead Airport center to be successful, and especially the retail and the commercial, not only for our residents, but for all residents up there. And so we strongly believe that adding additional residential component to help support that retail and commercial that is currently zoned and approved, we think it's a great mix for a, a mixed-use area up there for all these uses that we all want to see.
Sure, I get it. But why can't we just leave it at LDS? Why do we have to go MDS? That's, that's my question. I mean, you can get the same, same thing, you can get the starter homes or whatever in LDS, one home per acre. I'm, I just, I don't know, I guess maybe I, I'm having a, I don't know, I'm just not understanding why we have to go to MDS when the land's available, and nobody's going to complain if, if it's on LDS, and we wouldn't even be here.
If I may, for, for two reasons, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One is, we don't believe right now there's a big market for one-acre lots. I think there's a, there's certainly a market for smaller lots, smaller yards, folks coming in and buying these properties. According to our market research, and a family who's been building for thirty or forty years believes that there's more of a market for the MDS. But two, it's the cost of the homes, too. And you got to bring in the infrastructure, right? And you got to spread that infrastructure over a certain number of homes. And if you can do it from, in our minds, somewhat of a modest increase from one to three, that's already allowed under the master plan, now we're spreading that cost of all the infrastructure over more homes, which in fact will reduce the, the price point of, of these homes, which is why we went from one to three with that open space buffer to make sure we were being sensitive to the surrounding areas.
Okay. Well, then you just, you just opened up another question I just thought of. So you're saying entry-level homes, so what kind of price range are you estimating? Because the homes in Silver Knolls are, are medium, are selling for $700,000, and you can look that up on any, any webpage, any, like Zillow or Redfin or anything like that. The homes are, the medium home price in Silver Knolls is $700,000, $344 a square foot.
And I, with all due respect, can't stand up here and project what they might sell for in three, four years, right? There's a lot of steps to take. This is step one, the zoning, no project yet. Step two, I'd have to come before you with a tentative map. And then obviously, step three is a final map that takes years to complete, and then an infrastructure plan, and then finally buildings. So we're looking at, you know, two, three, no, three, four years out, even before you get a shovel in the ground.
Right, I understand that. I understand. All right. Well, I, I don't think I'll take up any more of anybody's time. Let me just check my notes here.
And we do have the RTC map, but that was helpful.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just looked it up not too long ago, but, so it's showing, it's showing the project for 2036? Can you put it on the Elmo? Now click on number seventeen. Yeah, but click, click on, so it's an interactive map, that's the one I was looking at. Click on number seventeen.
This is a PDF file.
Oh, that's only a PDF. Oh, so you're not on the actual webpage.
So the timeframes listed at the top, 2026, 2030. As you can see, it's listed as number seventeen for Red Rock and number ten. And the table's actually above the map. So again, 2026, 2030. Number ten, Moya, widened to two to four lanes. Seventeen, Red Rock, two to four lanes.
From 395 to where? From?
Placerville.
Placerville.
Placerville, which is just north of this project.
Okay, now, in your, in your expertise, because you do this, I'm assuming, all the time, do you ever see those timelines change?
They can vary, but generally consistent.
They're generally consistent?
Yeah, I can't verify with RTC's timeline.
Okay. In my personal experience, I've seen those timelines change numerous times. In fact, they just changed from two weeks ago to that, because I looked this up two weeks ago, and it said 2050 timeline. In fact, I have documents that, that show that. So, but we're not here to debate that. I'm just trying to find the findings, that's all. So, you know what, I'm not gonna, I don't think I'm gonna waste anybody else's time. I don't, I don't, I don't think I can support this, because I can't find anything other than the military finding on this, because I just don't see it. I don't think it's a good fit for the area. I don't think that it's gonna, I think it's going to create a safety issue. I think that we're overreaching on the sewer and the water. I know that there's been a struggle for water rights out in that area. I know that the, the staff report says that you can buy them, but everybody that I've talked to out there says they cannot buy them. So anyways, I, I personally cannot support this, the way it's written right now.
Chair, if you will, I have one more question for staff. Tim, thanks. So, it's been discussed at some length that this is a zoning change, not a tentative map, and the tentative map process includes a lot of the more detailed analysis when there is a specific proposal going forward. If time goes forward, and there's some resource that's not there, the sewer capacity's not there, the water capacity's not there, is there anything about this zoning change that prevents the applicant and owner from developing it one unit per acre and avoid, you know, so they can put them on septic and avoid the sewer issue?
Tim Evans, Planner. So as it's today, if, you know, the applicant was to not move forward with what's proposed, they would have the ability to move forward with potentially applying for a parcel map or subdivision map, something along those lines?
Apologies, I, I don't think my question was clear. If we approve the zoning change, but then in the future, there's some finding for a tentative map that's hard for them to support if the sewer gets all used up by other applicants, does changing it to medium-density suburban prevent them from developing with septic on one-acre lots?
I'll go ahead and address that, if I... It really depends on, on, we rely on our, on the experts at the Health Department to make that determination. There's nothing that would necessarily prohibit a limited number of, of units from utilizing individual septic disposal systems. However, they would have to meet the, the criteria laid out by the Health Department, minimum lot sizes, and there's a, a limit in the number of parcels that can be created under five acres in size on, on septic. So they would, there, there is a potential, but it would be limited.
And that limit exists today under the low-density suburban? So basically, the development potential, if in the future there isn't any of the particular resources...
Correct.
The applicant still has the ability to come and, and develop at the density that they're available to develop now. And if the resources are there, then they can move forward at a higher density.
I would say it would be very, very restrictive if, if the sewer capacity is not, cannot handle the proposed density. Then, then there is a limited, but there is some opportunity to, to still develop, yeah.
Thank you.
I think they would have to, my personal opinion, I think they'd have to go back to LDS to do that. Once you're at MDS, you, you're kind of stuck.
I, I live on an MDS lot that has septic.
Well, I know, but the lots vary in size, from one acre to fifty acres and things like that, so that all works into the formula. You know, the regional plan also, from, from my notes here, from what I can see, it doesn't even, it doesn't support this either. So, regional prior, regional plan priorities are made, aspects to growth in mixed-use core, tier one, tier two. The plan will leave the residents with an unfair situation. Tier three is the last place they want places built. In fact, it's the last one that, that they want approved residential densities. Densities is what we're talking about, MDS three, as an established land use designation. According to the regional plan, page seventy-seven, they're the lowest of the priority hierarchies within the land of the Truckee Meadow Service Area. So, anyways, does anybody else have any other comments on this? I don't want to stay here all night.
Would you like to make a motion?
Uh, go ahead, yeah. Go ahead, make a, I'll make a motion, yeah. Well, I can't. I, the chair can't make a motion on these, can he?
No, the chair can make a motion.
Oh.
Anyone can.
I thought the chair wasn't allowed to make a motion. All right. So I move that after, given reasonable consideration, the information contained in the staff report, and information received during the public hearing, the Regional Planning Commission deny the resolution included in Exhibit A with the recommendation of adopting a regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA24-0003, having, being unable to make all the following findings in the Washoe County Code Section 110. And then the rest of that. And so me personally, I cannot find, it's not consistent with the mass, master plan. It's not compatible with the land uses surrounding it, and it will adversely impact the public health, safety, and welfare of the areas surrounding it. It, well, it's not compatible with Item Three, response to change conditions for a more desirable use. Desirable use, in my opinion, is based upon the owner of the Pacific land and not the surrounding lands. There is not availability of facilities that I can see, based upon my calculations. It will have adverse effects, and it's not the desired pattern growth for this area. I can find seven, there is no effect on a military installation, but that's my motion. Motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Owens has a second.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of denial, please say nay. Nay to all those, how do I say this? Huh?
If they're voting for the denial, will you vote yes?
Why don't we do a roll call vote?
Okay.
And yes, your, your motion is to deny it, so if you agree with the motion, then you would vote aye.
Okay.
And then you would, but I think doing a roll call vote would be the easiest.
That's fine. So I did mine.
Commissioner Barnes?
Nay.
Okay. Commissioner Lazaruski?
Nay.
Commissioner Nelson?
Nay.
Commissioner Owens?
Aye.
And I believe you have to list what she can't find, correct? Just lists?
Sure. Number two, number four, and number five.
Commissioner Petersen also voted aye.
Yeah, I've voted aye, because it says that we have to find all of these.
Okay, so the motion fails, and at that point, you can open up the floor for an alternate motion.
Commissioner Nelson, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt the resolution included as Exhibit A recommending adoption of the regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA24-0003. Having made all the following findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.821.15 par and D, I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed regulatory zone amendment in WRZA24-0003 as set forth in the, in the staff report for the submission to Washoe County Board of Commissioners, and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Lazaruski has a second.
Okay, all those in favor to approve it, say aye.
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 And those to not approve it, say nay. Nay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Owens, how are you voting?
Nay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so motion passed. Let's move on to the next one. Eight D Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA24-0004 for Osage Road. Mr. Lloyd, please.
Okay, for hearing discussion and possible action to recommend adoption of a regulatory zone amendment to the North Valleys regulatory zone map, to change the regulatory zone on three parcels at 10600, 10100, and 10101, Osage Road, from low-density suburban to medium-density suburban, and to change the regulatory zone on a portion of Osage Road from public semi-public facilities to MDS. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign a resolution to this effect. Once again, representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Tim Evans.
Tim Evans, Planner. So the case before you today is Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA24-004 for Osage Road. So the request before you is to change the regulatory zone from low-density suburban to medium-density suburban on approximately 43.84 acres, and is, which includes three parcels, as well as a 5.39 acre portion of Osage Road, and the portion that would actually be changed from public slash semi-public facilities, or PSP, to MDS would include a 2.08 acre portion of that 5.39 acre roadway portion. So as mentioned earlier, there are three parcels that are subject to this regulatory zone amendment in one roadway. So the three regulatory zone parcel are the three parcels themselves, as far as acreage goes. The first one is 8.56 acres, the second is 20 acres, the third is 13.2. And then, as mentioned earlier, the roadway is 5.39 acres. So this property or the subject parcels are located within the North Valleys planning area, and the parcels are currently zoned, as mentioned earlier, low-density suburban and public slash semi-public facilities. And that PSP zoning is specific to just the roadway. So on the screen, you can see the proposed parcels that are subject to this regulatory zone amendment. So the area in yellow would all be changed from LDS, or low-density suburban, to MDS, medium-density suburban. And as you can see, the portion that would not be changed, as far as the roadway goes, to MDS is that red portion. So that area there would all remain PSP zoning, and then the remaining portion that is within the yellow area would change to MDS. So as far as existing conditions go for these parcels, there is one parcel that is developed with a single-family dwelling that is 2,700 square feet, and it also has a well in septic, or is served by a well in, well in septic. The remaining three parcels, which includes the Osage Road parcel, are all undeveloped. And as far as the developed parcels go, the developed parcel, as mentioned earlier, has, is served by a well in septic system, and all parcels are gently sloping. And parcels to the north and west, on average, are approximately one to two acres. And parcels to the north and west, on average, are approximately one to two acres, and are developed with single-family dwellings, and with the remaining parcels being residential parcels surrounding, and are also, some of them are undeveloped. Parcels to the east and south are within the city limits of Reno, and they vary in parcel size from anywhere from as low as about .2 to .3, all the way up to 20 acres, and their zoning varies from industrial to multifamily residential, as well as single-family So, based on the acreage proposed, or the acreage of the parcels, the proposed maximum density potential would be 131 dwelling units within that MDS portion, and then there is no density that is allowed for dwelling units within the public slash semi-public facilities portion, so there's no density or dwellings that would be allowed within the roadway. So, as with all projects, they are sent out for review. This project was sent out for review to multiple departments and agencies, specifically to engineering being one of them. So, like the last project, this property will also be served by the City of Reno, by the Reno Stead Water, wastewater facility for sewer service, and facilities are available, and there is capacity, based on the comments from the City of Reno, that there is capacity to serve the proposed density. As well as, this project was sent to the Truckee or Tamoa, and there is the potential and availability for water service, and the subject parcels being annexed into Tamoa's service area, and there is nearby services that could be made available to serve the properties. And access is provided by Red Rock Road, or excuse me, Osage Road, and a traffic impact letter was provided by the applicant, and it was also given to engineering for review, and there were no concerns in relation to access to the subject properties, or no concerns in relation to traffic. The project was also sent to the Northern Nevada Public Health Department, and future development in relation to this project, the comment from Northern Nevada Public Health stated that future development will require connection to water and sewer service for the proposed density. So, for the proposed density, using a well in septic system would not be a possibility, and water and sewer service would be required. If this regulatory zone amendment was to occur and development in the future via subdivision map was to come through, it would have to be served by water and sewer service. And the project was also sent to the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and no concerns in relation to the project were provided by either one of those agencies. So, the project was properly noticed, it was sent to 83 different property owners in the vicinity, and a total of three public comments were received, not two, as it shows on the screen. After the presentation was prepared, there was an additional comment that was received, and all of the comments received have been provided to the planning commission prior to this hearing, and all of them were in opposition to the project. So, staff is able to make all seven required findings, as detailed on pages 13 through 16 in the staff report. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 24-004, and provides the motion on the screen, as well as in the staff report. And I'm available for any questions, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
All right, can the applicant give his presentation now, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
For the record, again, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of Lifestyle Homes, this second presentation is a little redundant to the first, it's the same area plan, same findings, so I'll try to breeze through it fairly quickly. Again, it's a regulatory amendment, to go from MDS, excuse me, LDS to MDS, I think it's important on this particular site to look south and east. Staff used a very good word, transition, that this Reno city limits are directly to the east. You can see existing industrial, you can see existing multifamily. This project brings three units per acre, which is a good, and staff's word, transition to the LDS that continues to flow northwest. Again, pulling another exhibit from staff, this is a regulatory amendment from three zoning parcels, right from LDS and public facility, rezoning the roadway that goes through the project site, which allows us to modify that roadway if and when a tentative map moves forward. And again, in staff's words, or Janelle's words, I appreciate the worst-case scenario is 131 units, and all agencies have confirmed that they have no concerns with that number. Again, we're back in the master plan for suburban residential, MDS isn't allowed, permitted zoning category in the suburban residential master plan designation. Traffic, again, operate within the levels of service, we've talked a little bit about on the last project, that in the next two to five years, Red Rock Road will be widening, we think that's the exact pinpoint from when a tentative map and final map would move forward, so there's good consistency and compatibility for that traffic improvement. But again, I think a commissioner mentioned that today we did a traffic generation letter, but a full-blown traffic impact study is required when we move forward with a tentative map to verify all the conditions are still applicable. I'll just run through these findings, we do believe it's still in substantial conformance with the master plan. Again, I just want to show this exhibit again for the compatibility, we absolutely believe this is a transition area, we're right next door to the City of Reno, there's existing industrial, there's existing multifamily, that makes this a nice site to the west. Again, I don't want to reiterate what staff said, but this literally went to, I think, over 20 agencies and departments, and either they provided no comment, or did not provide a comment, but certainly no concerns, including from fire. Again, change conditions of the area won't be repetitive, other than to point out on this map, you can see that yellow, or excuse me, that green box, Reno Air Logics Park, just to the south of that, between Silver Lake and that green box is Osage and the area we're talking about. So, it's just right in the center of what the City of Reno is doing with the airport area and the surrounding uses, we think it's a great and compatible mixed-use proposal that falls perfectly within the planned development of the area. And again, as mentioned in the last item, we're anticipating industrial, commercial, office park, and very important, retail and commercial, but no residential. We think this project will bring the rooftops to hopefully make sure that that retail and commercial not only built, but are successful and maintained for a long period of time. And again, I didn't touch on this too much on the last presentation, but this what's currently being built, over a million square feet, 58 acres, there'll be employees in there next year, and so we think this is absolutely the time to bring some residential into the area. And change conditions, I've touched on, again, the adequate transportation, utilities, facilities, staff has confirmed, and all that departments have confirmed, there's no concerns. And there is also no concerns, right from staff report, will not adversely impact the policies or actions of the master plan. And again, I just, for the record, for the second item, exciting times in the area, and we think bringing some residential to support these exciting employment, this exciting employment center is appropriate. So, we do believe that staff's recommendation is appropriate. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you for the great presentation. At this time, let's open up public comment, do we have any public comment?
In chambers, I have John Range, followed by Lou Christensen.
Hi, you'll have to bear with me, I'm not much of a public speaker.
Just please state your name for the record.
My name is John Range. I own a parcel that used to be part of the 13-acre parcel that's referenced here, it's four and a half acres, so I'm just directly to the west of the 13-acre parcel. And a few years ago, I don't know how many really, four or five years back, I received a letter from the county stating that my property had been rezoned into the floodplain, so the front two-thirds, my property is an acre wide and four and a half acres deep. So, the front two-thirds, they sent me a map and showed me approximately where the flood stage had been realigned, if you will. And so, I know that that continues across the 13-acre parcel we're talking about, and some of the rest of that property as well. Osage goes east-west, and then turns to the north, and that whole corner there is, you know, that they want to develop is roughly 40 acres, so, you know, looking 120 or whatever homes. If they get the sewer for it, that's fine, but when I was looking at developing my property, I was told that I would have to have an engineered septic system, which started about 140,000. So, that kind of derailed me, because at the same time, I lost my current home in the Poeville fire. So, that sort of sidetracked my aspirations out here in Silver Knolls. I also own a home up the road on Osage, that was bequeathed to me by a close friend who's passed, and that's probably a third to a half a mile up the road going north, and even in those areas, there are problems with runoff, when we have a big-time snow rain event where you get the, all the creeks rushing and everything. The system that's within the Silver Knolls community at times is overwhelmed already when those situations occur. So, putting homes down in that area, you're just going to be basically building in the floodplain. Between Osage and the urban adventure, or whatever the big building out there is, they put their footprint down in Silver Lake, which causes the water to go elsewhere. That area is just a natural drainage and sort of a holding place for water to go, really out there at the, sort of at the bottom of the slope from Silver Knolls, there really is nowhere else for it to go when Silver Lake is full. So, I think building in that zone would require quite a bit of engineering.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Lou Christensen, followed by Jay Allen.
Lou Christensen, speaking to item 8D. I don't think the board should be swayed at all by any promises that have anything to do with businesses being built around the airport now. That fact is not germane to what we're talking about here, so please don't consider that. Do consider what the previous fellow said regarding the inundation that occurs in this part of Silver Knolls. Gently sloping is greatly overstating how the water runs off of that piece of ground, it does not run off. You know, at this point, I'm sure, you know, we can make the zoning amendment, and then the engineers can try and figure out how to do something to make it work. But if people try, I suspect, think about the Swan Lake debacle and what that cost the city of Reno, and I guess the county would be on the hook for problems here. I mean, there's still water that surrounds the Urban Outfitters building from the floods we had in 2018. And, which brings to mind the map that was shown by Mr. Gordon, he said, "Look to the southeast," and he's trying to describe a transition area. There is no multifamily housing to the southeast, it's all industrial. The nearest multifamily housing is a new apartment complex about two miles south on Red Rock Road. There's nothing near this piece of ground. If you look directly to the south of this piece of ground, at Urban Outfitters, the white building, big wooden building that showed to the south of it, you'll see water surrounding that, and in the event of another big water event, it'll, this property here is going to be underwater, too. So, just for the record.
Thank you.
Lastly, in chambers, I have Jay Allen.
Kind of confused, because usually when you ask an engineer a question, you get a straightforward answer. And whenever the engineers and the traffic were asked a question, it went round and round. And I'm wondering how you can approve something with no definite plans and no definite boundaries? As far as Red Rock, it's Granite Hills is on the one side, the lake is on the other. Okay, you have houses along the side. Are there any easements to the house, for the houses that are there? Do you plan on buying those houses? You know, what's your plan? If it stays low-density, you might not have to build schools. What did Hugg High cost? How much was that to the commission? You know, how much is a junior high? They just remodeled O'Brien, and it's at capacity right now. How much is a middle school cost? How many millions? The property taxes, will they pay for that much of a bond issue? You know, you have to think about, a lot of times what things come down to is monetary. And the citizens would like you to be fiscally responsible. And the developer will develop something, and you collect the taxes, but down the road, you have services that you have to provide. Roads, schools, who's going to, I guess, the homeowners would pay for the sewer and the water hookup. But even then, do they have definite plans for sewer hookup? And if you don't have the plans in place, why are you changing this from a low-density, which everybody would be happy with, to a medium-density that is very nebulous? You know, we have problems with infrastructure in this area, and it's time to be kind of more like Vegas, I hate to say it, but they have three-lane highways, they have six-lane highways going to nowhere, because they plan ahead. Thank you.
Appears there's no more public comment in chambers, I do have some hands raised on Zoom. Caller ending with 4353, please unmute and state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Doug Heron, lifelong Silver Knolls resident. So, three things. Notably absent from the invitation were people to the south of these proposed projects, but they are greatly impacted, such as my parents, who live on Bodie Drive, and they are affected by flooding. Like I say, I've lived here over 50 years, so I know where the water goes when it starts to flood. And when it starts to flood, there is a river, and I am talking, imagine 100 yards wide river that you will drown in on the east side of Osage. My parents luckily are on the west side of Osage, but they're only saved by about six to eight inches in height. They are spared the brunt of it, but with this new development, high-density new development, there will be more runoff, less soil to absorb the moisture, and it will just add to the flooding problems. So, that is a serious issue. So, so that is a, that is a serious issue. Um, I mean, literally, the houses are, they have to open their doors and just let the water run through, uh, on the, on the south side of Osage. Um, the other thing is, um, someone had mentioned that freeway entrance, um, at Rock. That, that's a very good point because, uh, it, it does narrow down to one lane, and when it gets icy, I've, uh, I've been in rows of cars fifty long, and you cannot get up that, uh, slight grade because there are cars that are spinning out, and it becomes a huge traffic jam, and that will just worsen with, uh, higher-density areas. And the third, the third issue about increasing the density out here in Silver Knolls area is Red Rock is a two-lane highway, but there's a section that goes through housing, um, and we're already pretty much driving through their living rooms. The, the, uh, the houses were, were built very close to Red Rock, and, um, to expand that anymore, um, would be like having your front door, uh, on the edge of three ninety-five. It's just, um, it, it's just a, it's not, the infrastructure wasn't built-
Thank you, Mr. Heron. We have to stop you. Your time has expired.
Sure.
I didn't hear the timer. Sorry.
I also have Lisa. Lisa, please unmute, state your first and last name for the record.
Uh, Lisa Eckert again on White Owl. Um, as many other residents have already discussed, the infrastructure is just not here to support this many people coming into this area. If my calculations are correct, and I could be wrong, I'm just basing this on the number of houses that they're supposed to build on the other side of Red Rock, plus the ones at the end of my street, plus the ones at Osage. If they're single-family homes, you assume that it's gonna be two parents and maybe one kid, potentially two. That's potentially seventy-two-hundred more people that would be moving into this area, utilizing the roadways, utilizing the schools. We have two grocery stores in the area that take fifteen to twenty minutes just to get to from our area. You're increasing traffic without really having a plan of how that's gonna look. Sure, you can widen some spaces on Red Rock, but as the previous gentleman was saying, when you get into Silver Knolls past the church, you cannot widen that street because there are homes there. Unless you purchase those homes, knock them down, and then widen it, there's no way to increase that area. Now, again, I used to live in the stead area by the airport, and they, they did widen that area and then built a, a debacle of a freeway entrance on Lemon Drive that has not decreased any of the traffic in that area. It's absolutely asinine to believe that approving this is going to do anything positive for this area at all. It's only gonna increase traffic, it's only going to increase stress on the environment, on our, our current existing infrastructure with absolutely no plan on how to improve what already exists out here. When I was living instead, you could smell the sewer during the summers because they didn't plan for the sewers in that area with all of the new apartments and homes that were being built. It was absolutely disgusting. So, go ahead and approve this, and then a couple of years down the line, have to redo everything because you didn't plan appropriately for the infrastructure. And then, again, who is gonna pay for all of that infrastructure? We are, because our property taxes are gonna increase. So, the developer can come in here, and they can plop down as many houses that they, as they want and make a huge profit, and the residents are then left with the problems that they leave behind. Thank you.
I have no further public comment in chambers, nor more hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll, uh, close the public comment, bring it back to the board for discussion or questions.
I just have a quick question of staff. In looking through the board packet, there wasn't really a good map that shows the existing, um, zoning within the area. So, can you speak to the, I'm looking at page seven, um, 'cause that's pretty much the, the one map that is useful. So, the south area that, um, is stated that there's multifamily, where is that zoning?
Tim Evans, planner. So, as far as the multifamily zoning, that area that's to this, directly to the south, that's within the city, uh, city of Reno. Um, so, directly to the south, that area there is industrial, um, as well as to the, to the east, that's industrial as well. And then, it's intermixed, just barely beyond that, that's where the multifamily residential zoning is, um, within the city of Reno.
So, it's not directly adjacent, it's-
Yes.
You've got a strip of your, um, industrial in there somewhere.
Yes, it's mixed within that area to the east and south.
Sir!
No, don't. Please don't make comments like that, thank you.
That's all, thank you.
I got a question on that. So, Tim, how do you access, how do you access those homes from Osage Road? Is it a direct path, or do you have to drive all the way down around the lake to access those homes?
So, Tim Evans, planner, so you're meaning the portion that's within the city limits? So, that part, there's a completely different access as far as looking at the maps that I can see from, uh, the Washoe Regional Mapping System or GIS system. Um, the roads to access that is, um, it's not Osage Road or anything like that that is utilized to access those properties.
Okay.
I think they come off Moya.
Go ahead. Right, but you've gotta drive three, four miles to get to those homes.
I've got some questions for Tim, if that's all right. They proposed to rezone part of the road as well. Uh, is that a public road easement that exists on Osage?
So, that is a, as far as I'm aware, and engineering can speak a little bit even more on the actual road easement itself, um, but there is an easement through there, and the reason for them wanting to go ahead and rezone that portion is to allow them flexibility in the future. Should there be a development that they could go ahead and adjust that roadway where they would like?
Okay, so, the proposal does not remove the public access easement, that's-
Right, no, that would just, no. It's just for, in relation to the zoning, the easement would still remain.
Okay. Uh, another question, this one might be for Janelle, but, uh, the flood zone occurs across a portion of this parcel. How do we square raising the density, um, within a flood zone?
So, I will let that, Janelle, speak to that.
Janelle Thomas, senior licensed engineer for the record. Um, yes, we have standards for construction within floodplains, and, um, any of those standards would need to be met as development occurs. Um, the density itself would not, um, you know, prohibit the development within our standards. Does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're saying, I'm not sure.
So, as, as properties are, um, located within, um, within a FEMA-designated floodplain, um, the applicant would be required to meet the standards of construction within that floodplain. And that includes up to, um, elevation of the, of the homes with the finished floors a foot above the base flood elevation and, and things like that. So.
Thank you.
Janelle, I also have a question on that. So, as part of the development code, all of the runoff that's created on these parcels has to stay within these parcels, correct?
Uh, well, they have to develop a stormwater management plan with their development whenever that comes in.
So, if, if they develop their stormwater plan, there's an event, um, water escapes from their designated areas and damages other homes adjacent, is it the county that's on the hook for that, or is it the developer?
No, we would be looking at that drainage, um, design before it gets approved and before any construction would be, um, allowed to commence. And so, um, in this particular area, this is a closed basin, as has been referenced previously by some of the, um, from of the, some of the commenters. Um, there is a requirement within our code, within our grading code, that, um, there needs to be, um, mitigation at a one-point-three-to-one ratio in order to develop within here. Because of that additional complexity of it being a closed basin, that, that, uh, additional, um, compensation is required when the design comes in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Just to clarify for, those not, might not be familiar with mitigation, wha- what that means is that if this zoning change is approved and the developer comes eventually with a compliant application, that the end result would be more storage space for stormwater within the closed basin than there currently is now.
That is correct, Janelle Thomas for the record. Um, so, the, uh, the calculations for the runoff, they would have to provide for thirty percent more, um, containment as opposed to a, you know, hundred percent containment.
Thirty percent more than currently shows us containment within the-
Right. So, we're looking at retention, um, in order to provide for that capacity because it is a closed basin. And it, it relies, um, almost solely on, um, evaporation through the summer months and infiltration and things like that. So, those are the, those are the components that we're looking at when the design is, is presented.
So, currently in a hundred-year storm event, this property is providing a certain number of acre-feet of storage.
Correct.
And at the end of an app, accepted application, there would be a hundred and thirty percent of the current amount of storage provided onsite.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct.
I think that one of the public comments showed an aerial view of the area and how much flooding was, uh, in there. Um, Janelle, it, the, the, Osage Road is a dirt road, is there any plans for improvement on that that you're aware of in this master plan?
That's not a, that's not a consideration with this application.
Okay, all right. Any more questions, comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. All right, I'll call again for a motion.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I am having, I have a tremendous amount of respect for our staff and for the professional geologists that mapped the hundred-year floodplain and all that, but given that it is a closed basin, and so we're not just talking about, um, single storm flows, it can be cumulative over time. I, I have a really hard time finding number six, that this meets the, uh, desired pattern for orderly growth, given that if we have a couple of hundred-year storms in a row, this could easily be more than thirty percent over the current storage, and that upzoning this would put more residences and more working families in the way of that flooding. If no one else is looking to make a motion, I would move that I cannot make finding number six and that this be denied on that grounds. I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the planning commission adopt, deny the resolution included in Exhibit A, um, for regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA two-four-zero-zero-four. Unable to make finding number six, that increasing the density within the flood zone of a closed basin meets our desired pattern of growth.
I'll second that one. So, we have a motion for denial and a second. All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
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 Any opposed to the denial, say nay. That motion fails.
Ms. Owens, how did you vote on that motion?
I voted for the denial.
Thank you.
Can I also clarify that I cannot make finding number two, number four, or number six?
Sure. Then, Mrs. Robb for the record, I can't make any of them except for the military one.
Commissioner Barnes, would you like to, um, state for the record which findings you cannot make?
Uh, yes, uh, I cannot make two, four, and six.
Commissioner Owens, would you please state for the record which findings you cannot make?
Two, four, five, and six.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us on to, the motion fails. Um, that moves us on item number nine. Chair-
The motion-
The one that passes the fail, correct, yeah.
Would I, would you let me, I'm sorry, would you allow me to read the appeal procedure, please?
Item nine, chair and commission items.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Oh, appeal. Can you read the appeal procedure, please?
Thank you. Uh, most decisions rendered by the planning commissioner are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and qualifies as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at three-two-eight-three-six-one-zero for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, item nine, chair and commission items, future gen items. I, I have one, I would like to discuss the dark sky, um, dark sky initiative that's in the master plan, but there's no way to enforce it because, uh, there's no, Article four-fourteen does not specify a bulb wattage or a Kelvin maximum, um, and so, I would like to get direction on how to, um, proceed in that matter. Anybody else have any future gen items? Um, request for information from staff, does anybody have anything?
I do. Um, didn't we used to reach out to the Washoe County School District for feedback on these? It doesn't seem like we've been receiving any feedback from them.
Yes, so, all of our applications go to the school district. I, I, we have noticed a noticeable, um, difference in, in the response that we are getting from the school district, uh, compared to what we used to get. Uh, but, yeah, we will follow up with, with that and provide-
'Cause on the, on the last two items on the list of who they sent things out to, it wasn't on there. So.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure to re- repeat that to, to staff, that, uh, yeah, especially tentative maps, rezones, master plan amendments, um, it's standard that, uh, that they go to the school district. Uh, in part, we have not been receiving, um, comments from the school difs, district on a number of applications that we're sending out, uh, recently.
Are we sending it to the right person?
And so, I'm sorry?
Are we sending it to the right person? Did somebody maybe retire?
It's, it's going to the, the, yes, it's going to the correct-
Okay.
-correct people there.
Thank you.
Um, I'd also like to know if we've had any, um, thing that we've voted to approve or deny overturned by the county commissioners in the last, uh, in the last year, right? 'Cause we haven't, haven't done that in a while, so.
I will gather that information and, and report at the next, uh, next planning commission meeting.
Um, anybody else got anything on that? No? All right. Legal, or anything from report or previous commissioner items, sorry?
I do have a few to report on.
Okay.
Um, there were a, a few code amendments that came before the planning commission recently. Um, let's see, the, their first readings for the, uh, the code amendment for the housing package two-point-five went to the BCC on, uh, um, November nineteenth. There was also the, uh, the code amendment for, uh, changing the administrative process for care of the infirm, also went, uh, on that same date. Uh, let's see, the, there was also an appeal of the, uh, housing package two-point-five also on that, that date. Let's see, the, there was also an appeal of the Housing Package 2.5 also on that, that date. The first reading took place. The second reading for that item will take place on December 17th. And the second reading for the care of the infirm will take place on December 10th. That's all that I have. Just wanted to remind this group, this, this commission of, of the training that's coming next Monday. If you're available to attend, that would take place upstairs in the Mount Rose Conference Room at, at noon on, on Monday.
Now, are you providing lunch for that?
There will be lunch provided, yeah.
Perfect, then I'll be there. Sorry, legal, anything from legal?
Sorry, is there a Zoom option for that or is it in-person only?
I do apologize. I don't know that we've set up a Zoom option. I'm looking at the technical folks.
I'll have to double check, but I don't think we did. Because not everybody could make it.
I'm sorry?
I don't think everybody could make it.
Right.
We just threw out some dates and that was about the best we could do. But we could probably accommodate a Zoom.
Yeah, we, we may be able to accommodate a Zoom. We'll get back to you on that, that request, Amy.
I just made a link and sent it to all the commissioners.
He called you Amy.
We got the whole room slideed, rose, so.
Hey, this is a, just for clarification, this training is combined with the BOA, right? It's for both?
Yes, it's, it's a joint training.
Any other questions before I move on? No? Okay, legal, anything from legal?
I, I don't have anything for you. It was kind of.
Okay.
Go.
I don't have any legal updates for you today, but this is our last meeting of the year and so I do want to wish everyone happy holidays. Hope you all have, you know, some wonderful time off planned. And I'm looking forward to seeing everyone in 2025. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll also put up the last public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
I have no general public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so with that.
Wait, I have one hand raised on Zoom. Just a moment. Lisa, go ahead and unmute and state your first and last name for the record.
Lisa Eckert, I apologize. On the letter that I received, it has a number of 328-6100. Is that the number that I would call for appeal? Or is it a different number?
Yeah, I would call 328, 3610.
3610?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I do have one more. Looks like.
I'll just shut up. Go ahead.
Doug, I believe that's you. Doug Heron, please unmute, state your first, last name for the record.
Doug Heron, I just wanted to thank you for your time and your service and you made the right decisions tonight. Really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, and then with that, it's 9:33. We're adjourned.